Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Eastline Board of Finance special meeting of Wednesday, April 21st, 2021. The time is now 6:38 PM. It's been a while since we've done the Pledge of Allegiance, so I brought a flag today. I think because we're going to be doing a very serious budget deliberation, it's time that we brought this back in. I don't think anybody ever anticipated we'd be doing Zoom meetings for over a year, but here we go. So if you'll join in the pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One shins under God, indivisible, liberty and just for all. Okay, with that, we will move on to public delegations. I see that there are seven attendees on the webinar call. If you would like to address the Board of Finance tonight, I would ask you to please raise your hand, and I will let you into the meeting to speak one by one. The very first request I received for public delegations is a letter from SCORE. That is the Southeastern Connecticut Organization for Racial Equity. And I was asked as the board chair to have this letter from their organization read into the public record. So bear with me for a few minutes. This is about two pages long, but I will read the letter to the Board of Finance in its entirety. "To the Eastline Board of Finance, Thank you very much for inviting our organization to speak this evening. We are the Southeastern Connecticut Organization for Racial Equity, otherwise known as SCORE. SCORE is a nonpartisan organization committed to anti-racist action with the ultimate goal of making people of color feel heard, safe, and welcome in southeastern Connecticut. In our short time as a certified 501(c)(3) organization, we have collaborated with the Eastline Board of Education in reforming school policy and implementing increased racial equity professional development, developed scholarship programs for high-achieving graduates of color from Eastline and New London High Schools, and presented before the Eastline Board of Selectmen a proposal to adopt a resolution declaring racism a public health crisis. Moreover, we have accumulated a sizable following of Eastline residents through social media platforms, in-person, and virtual fundraisers, and a protest in support of Black Lives in June of 2020. In these ways, we have become a necessary conduit through which the Eastline community, especially those representing minority groups, can communicate with leadership bodies. We are here to speak about the proposed hiring increase of Eastline police officers. Our organization recently met with Chief Finkelstein in what we hope to be the first of many collaborative discussions on how to improve police-community relations. In this meeting, Chief Finkelstein described the need for more police presence in Eastline, citing the lack of sufficient call coverage, especially in the summer. He noted that because officers are handling multiple calls, they often must rush out of calls, inhibiting them from developing relationships with citizens. These reasons are certainly valid. We, of course, support the building of relationships between citizens and police. Moreover, Chief Finkelstein noted that Eastline ranks near the bottom of the state in the ratio of officers to citizens, and indicating that the proposed increase would bring the town closer to the state average. Overall, we are extremely excited to continue this relationship with Chief Finkelstein and the Eastline Police Department. Despite these reasons in support of a hiring increase, we present a few concerns about adopting this proposal at this point in time. At the center of these is a concern we recently spoke about with the Board of Selectmen, the need to consider minority populations' perspectives on all-town policy decisions. Currently, we as a town do not possess the data necessary to confidently say that this hiring proposal will benefit Eastline as a whole because we do not have data on how it will impact minority populations. It is commonly found that while certain populations of people feel safer with greater police presence, others, particularly minority populations, feel less safe. If this feels counterintuitive, that might indicate that we need to gather more information on why this sentiment exists. However, it can be a difficult task to gather these perspectives because the people who hold them often do not volunteer them for a number of reasons. For example, we are delighted to hear that many Eastline citizens are in regular contact with the police department and similarly happy to hear of the extremely few complaints filed against officers in the past few years. However, analyzing the content of only those who volunteer information is not adequate. We are missing data from those who do not volunteer the information. SCORE has begun the work of collecting this data. At our protest last June, we heard firsthand accounts of those who felt the current policing in Eastline was unideal, I think unideal. These speeches were echoed in various other testimonials compiled over the past year. We urge Eastline to consider conducting rigorous townwide surveys to get an accurate perception of the town's opinions. So just as the Board of Selectmen must consider how their decisions impact minority populations, we must also do so here. Beyond even the incorporation of minority perspectives into the making of crucial decisions that deeply affect those minority populations, we believe that the decision to increase the number of officers would not follow logically from the data that we do have. For one, it is unclear why the ratio of officers to citizens in a town is more important than the amount of crime. Hiring more officers to jump up the rankings of police presence relative to other towns does not appear to be a completely compelling argument. If our town's crime rate were simultaneously high, we could consider changes to make. But following strictly from the data that we have, the assumption that more officers will reduce crime in Eastline is not clearly supported. In fact, one could argue that using valuable resources to hire more officers at the expense of improving those we currently have is an inefficient tactic that does not set the department up for success by protecting its officers. In SCORE's conversation with Chief Finkelstein last week, he lamented not being able to send his officers to more trainings on crucial skills such as de-escalation, anti-bias, and non-lethal force. It seems to us that, given this sentiment and the new police accountability bills continually passing through state and national governments, priority should be given to adequately training the officers that we currently do have rather than hiring new ones. We acknowledge some of the scheduling concerns that accompany sending officers to trainings but are confident that these concerns may be mitigated by tactics such as staggering the training between officers. Moreover, we are sure that officers would welcome such trainings with open arms. When we were petitioning for enhanced anti-racism, anti-racism professional development for Eastline public school teachers, the teachers were actively asking for training because they wanted to be 100% sure that they were equipped to address any classroom situation regarding racism that they came across. We are confident that Eastline's officers are the same. They want to ensure that they are prepared for any situation that they come across during their workdays. Enhanced training in the areas of de-escalation, anti-bias, and non-lethal force is a crucial way to help them prepare for these situations. For the reasons laid out here, we believe that it is too early to adopt this increase in hiring. For one, we as a town are not currently operating based on the perspectives of all populations in Eastline. A beneficial step in rectifying this would be in conducting townwide surveys that actively seek out minority voices to ensure these perspectives are heard and using this data to found future decisions in all Eastline realms. In addition, the funding allotted for a hiring increase would be better served dedicated directly to the officers we currently do have. These officers risk their lives to protect this town, and they deserve to be trained adequately to do their job to the best of their ability, especially in the areas of de-escalation, anti-bias, and non-lethal force. As SCORE noted in our meeting with Chief Finkelstein, we are eager to help the department find high-quality trainings or assist in any other way that we can. Thank you very much for your time. Okay, and I thank SCORE for submitting their correspondence to the Board of Finance. That will be submitted to the Recording Secretary to be included with the minutes of this meeting this evening. That was the only correspondence that I personally received from anybody in the community and anybody that asked me to read something into the record. So now I'm going to turn to the attendees in the room and ask if there's anybody that would like to address the Board of Finance, please raise your hand. I see Lisa has raised her hand as the attendee, so I am going to promote her to panelist, bring her into the meeting so that she can address the board. Hi Lisa, if you could state your full name and address for the record? Let's try that again. We can't hear you. Cannot hear you. All right, one more time. So we cannot hear you. I think this has happened to us in the past, technical difficulties. I can give you my cellphone number. If you'd like to call my cellphone, I can put you on speaker and we can have you recorded that way. Would you like to do that? Okay, 860-857-7330. And when you call, if you wouldn't mind muting yourself on the Zoom call so we don't get feedback. The number again, 860-857-7330. Okay, hello Lisa, I'm going to put you on speaker.
I think she has to shut down her computer completely or iPad or whatever other device she has, so there's no kickback.
They will be able to hear my audio.
All right, let's try this again.
Hi guys, can anybody hear me?
No? Yes? Can you hear Lisa? Okay. I know, sorry folks for the technical difficulties, but I think, I think we're all set now.
Okay, you guys can hear me now? Yes, okay, great. So, hello. Um, so I just first want to thank you guys on the board. I know your job well.
So name, so name and address for the record, please.
Oh, all right, great. Lisa Picarazzi, 14 Oak Hill Drive in Niantic.
Thank you.
All right. So again, guys, hi, thank you for the job that you do. I know a little bit about it. It was a lot of time, a lot of hard work, and sometimes a lot of courage because you have to ask tough questions. You have to be able to say you don't know, and you have to be able to stand for transparency and just like although for your commitment to the justice of the country, I just wanted to acknowledge your service to that.
Good to hear.
To that end, I am here. This is one of the biggest budgets in the town. And the size of the budget alone really deserves extra special rigor in reviewing it. But first, I want to say that although I do have some concerns about specific items in the budget, I am not a defunder. I do not support that movement. In my view, I'm not sure it's grounded in reality, to be honest. And I'm just not part of that. That's not where my voice is, so I want to be very clear about that. I do know Chief Finkelstein and Sergeant Mason, I've worked with them before on the budgets and the PSB meeting, and they're good men. I have a lot of respect for them. As a taxpayer, though, I'm here to speak out about the budget. And I specifically have concerns about the increase in staff of two officers for the next six years. I listened to the tape the other night on April 12th. I heard the chief say that currently there are 24 officers, plus himself, the chief, and one part-time officer. Proposal of 12, as you can do the simple math, is fully a 50% increase in staffing. And I was unable to ascertain any reason during that, I don't want to say testimony, but discussion that was offered that would justify that increase. And I, you know this, but I'm asking you to remember that one new officer is not just an increase in salary, but there are exponential costs when someone comes on board of pension, health insurance, overtime budget, contractual overtime, leave time, training, uniforms, gear, et cetera, et cetera. So it's not just a salary, there's a lot more that goes with it. I'd like you to consider the demographics of the town. Some of this information was presented on the 12th. You can easily Google the US Census statistics, which I did. And what I saw is that the population of Eastline between 2010 and 2019 has increased 3.7%. Not increased, decreased 3.7%. It was stated at the meeting that we have a summer population and we need to be aware of that. But as you guys all know, that's not a new phenomenon in town. We've had a summer population increase since I've lived here. That is not new. So that factor shouldn't consider, should not be considered, I don't believe, in your decision-making. We also have mutual aid agreements in place with surrounding towns that can handle the swell in population in the summertime. I thought that Ms. TeKello brought, the question that she brought about the police logs at that meeting was an interesting question. I thought it was a good litmus test, albeit simple, of what the arrests are like in town. And to be honest, I didn't really follow the response on that. I heard some kind of response that not all of Eastline police are paper, what they are for other towns, which I didn't follow that. So I don't know. But I thought it was an insightful observation that Ann made. And if you were not satisfied with the answer you got, I would encourage you to pull the thread on that a little bit because I thought it was a revealing question. Statistics also show that the majority of crimes committed between the age groups of 15 to 24 years old. 66% of the Eastline population is over 35 years of age. 23% is over 65 years of age. Statistically, we are not a potentially high-crime population. The chief also stated that motor vehicle accidents were reduced by 20% over last year, I'm sure largely because of COVID. But nevertheless, that would result in poor resources required to respond to those calls. He also stated that 18,225 calls were received by the police department. I heard one of the board members, I think it was Camille, asked a question regarding the nature of those calls. Did they all require emergency services? Were they ambulance calls? Were they just, were they regular calls such as, you know, where's your, where are you located, or, or non-emergency calls? I didn't hear any response to that answer. That was an important question that was asked. I would encourage you folks to request a response to that. Were you provided trend data on arrest logs? I'm not sure I heard any of that on the call. And as you know, trend data is very important. It gives you context for the information that you get. I didn't hear any trend data on arrest logs, any trend data on overnight stays and further. Both of those parameters would also give you more information if it were benchmarked with other towns. I didn't hear any of that on the call. I think that's important information for you to have to make a decision of this magnitude. I heard the chief also say that a number of people were eligible for retirement in the police department. And I would respectfully submit that that has no bearing whatsoever on the decision that you make because there are many departments in town where there are folks of retirement age and most departments do not staff up in anticipation of retirements at some point. When police officers retire, we respond to their vacancy at that point, not because there are a certain age because we don't really know what their standards are to retire. So that information, in my opinion, should not factor into your decision. In conclusion, I would like to ask all of you on the Board of Finance, have you yourselves, have you yourselves answered the question for yourself, what is different in town this year from last year? What justifies the added expense in staffing? It is a radical departure and not only are you being, you're only asked to render a decision for this year, but you've been asked to consider for a six-year horizon. In my mind, I'm not seeing anything that different in town that would warrant that kind of a staffing increase. If you, I think you need to ask yourselves if you've been provided with sufficient justification. And if you have not, then I would urge you to say no. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. We appreciate your joining us this evening and sharing your thoughts with the Board of Finance members. I will now send you back to the attendee.
All right, I'm gonna hang up.
Oh, okay. All right, thanks. And let's see if I can make you, send you back to an attendee. Okay, so at this point, I still see a number of attendees on this webinar. If anyone that is listening in on this Board of Finance call would like to address the Board of Finance with comments, if you could please raise your hand and I will bring you into the webinar to speak to us. If you're not sure how to do that, I will provide my cellphone number once again and you can call in to be heard. Well, while that's not ideal, I just want to make sure I give everybody the opportunity to speak. So 860-857-7330. So I'll ask one final time, is there anybody attending this webinar that would like to address the Board of Finance? Okay, we have a Steven Rebelowski, so I will bring him in so that he can address the board. Good evening, Steven. If you could please state your full name and address for the record? And if you could unmute yourself? So I have brought Steve into the meeting. Steve, do you know how to unmute yourself? You can also text me at 860-857-7330. Nope, there you go. Very good.
I'm here, okay.
Yes, we can hear you now. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Just to let you know, I am on the Eastline Police Commission, but I've also was one of the original full-time officers for the town of Eastline back in 1974. And the town has grown considerably. And when I say considerably, we'd never had as many apartments, condos, full-capacity boating facilities, summer people that, with the influx. And I do understand that last year may have been a little slow with COVID, but things are starting to pick up again. There's a lot of construction going on in town. We have numerous state projects that are going to really hamper our north end of the town with I-95 at 161. These issues alone are going to be an additional problem for the police officers because if you get one incident, one major accident, that could tie up your two officers for a considerable amount of time. And I heard the fact about mutual aid. Mutual aid will happen only if needed, but it may not alleviate the problem of sending other officers from other departments to our calls. It's still going to be the responsibility of our officers. Back in the, I'll just say 1975, we had 30 officers, only five full-time and the rest were part-time. We still covered two shifts every, every day with, I mean, I'm sorry, two officers on every shift. With the exception on weekends, we'd had three to cover the, we'll call it the west area, Rocky Neck and the beach areas. This, this area has gotten so much busier. And when an officer goes to the scene, we just can't just say, okay, got all your information and leave. If you want a professional department, you have to have the officer have the ability to stay there, gather all the information, and if he has to do a neighborhood canvass, that's, that's going to entail more, more time, more personnel. It's not the ideal situation we have right now with the number of officers. And when it comes to training, my last six years, I just recently retired in December. I was a law enforcement council's recertification coordinator. That means I had every officer from 22 departments, had them once every three years to give them recertification on the mandates. Now, this did not include fire ops training, but it included such as hate and bias crimes, de-escalation techniques, human trafficking, use of force techniques. This is a continual process that the town has to send their officers through a 40-hour-through-LEC mandate, which takes the officers off the road for a full week. Those officers who missed the classes, they have to come back. But every officer's trained, and that's, that's the beauty part of how this system works. Every officer gets at least a minimum of 40 hours retraining every three years. There is a much-needed, and with the new state mandates, there's going to be additional training that's going to be required, and the town is going to need to have these areas covered. I would hope that the Board of Finance really considers hiring these two officers for the coming year. I'd just like to make a note of one other thing. During our hiring processes, process, the last couple of years, we have hired certified officers. These officers are certified, meaning they can come onto our job, spend maybe a month, month and a half, getting familiar with our records, getting familiar with our town if they're not familiar already. This is such a benefit to the town of Eastline because officers want to come here. This is, this is a benefit because we don't have to send these officers to 20 This is, this is a benefit, because we don't have to send these officers to twenty-six weeks at the police academy in Meriden, and still have to bring them back to our, our town and give them another three to six months of training before they're actually certified to go on the road. So you're actually hiring an officer who can go on a road from, within a month, month and a half, where if you hire a new recruit right off the street, you're not gonna have that officer available for a year. So these little things that we've been able to do through the police commission, and why people want to become Eastline police officers instead of somewhere else, and I'm not gonna mention the name of the department, because we're getting an influx from one department with super caliber people. But that's their loss and our gain. I just really hope that the Board of Finance looks at this situation and this issue and hires the two officers that we need, and the rest of the budget stays the same course. Thank you.
Thank you, Steven. I appreciate your attending our meeting and sharing your thoughts about the budget with us. You had identified yourself as a member of the police commission. Could you also please state your full name and address for the record?
Oh, sure. Steven Rebelowski, twenty-four, McKiddin Place, Eastline, Connecticut.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks again.
Okay.
So I still see a number of attendees. I'll, I'll ask a final time if anybody's interested in addressing the Board of Finance with regard to the town budget this evening or any other matter. Please raise your hand. If not, if you're unsure how to do that, you can call me, eight-six-zero-eight-five-seven-seven-three-three-zero. Okay, it does not look like there is another individual that would like to address the board, so we will now close public delegations and move on to item four of our agenda, old business, which relates to any outstanding information. I believe Lisa Picarazzi had asked the Board of Finance to think back if we had received all of the answers to the questions that we had. I will say that it has been an extremely busy week and a half where we did reach out with additional questions and additional requests for information, not only to the police department, but also to the Board of Education, also to the Finance Director, the first selectman. And, and information was coming to us up until five o'clock this evening, maybe even a little later. So it's been a whirlwind, but I was trying to keep on top of it, and I do believe that, I know all of my concerns were addressed, and I received all the information that I requested. Is there any Board of Finance member that, that is lacking information that they had asked for from any particular party?
Neil, can I interrupt for a minute?
I think Rich Steele held his hand up first, please.
Okay.
Yes, there, there was one question that I, I had asked during the presentation from the, from the chief. And I think that our first selectman had offered to try to find the information. It was, what is the percent of the budget that the police funding is for the town of Eastline? I didn't receive any answer to that i-in comparison to other communities in our region. And granted, I understood that it may be a difficult thing to kind of pull together, but that information did, did not come forward.
So, I don't see that the first selectman is on the call, obviously, because there is a concurrent Board of Selectment meeting happening. Anna, do you have any information in that regard that you could share with us?
I do not.
Okay. Well, I will say for my own purposes and tracking information, the requested police budget this year is two million nine hundred sixty-one thousand one seventy-five. That represents fifteen-point-one percent of our total budget. So that's just something that I kind of track for myself. But I can't answer your question, Rich, as to like how that compares to other neighboring communities, because I don't track it for anybody else.
Camille, can I weigh in for a second on that?
Yes, Chief. Chief Finkelstein, yes.
Yeah. So, so Rich, I, I attempted to try to gather some of the information. And one of the difficulties that exists that I immediately noticed was not every town obviously does its budget similarly. You have towns that inside of their general government budget have all of their board of ed capital. They have debt service, which is either included or not included. So at least looking myself, I could not make an apples-to-apples comparison to try to provide that information. I know the first selectman, I had relayed that to him, that I wasn't able to gather that information. I know he was gonna reach out to CCM to see if they had anything that kind of put that information together, but I did not receive an answer on that. But I just think it's important to point out, when you look at those budgets and when you self kind of explore that, there's a vast difference in how all of those budgets are put together. So especially when you're looking at total government budget, general government budget, board of ed budgets, not every town is the same, so I don't know if you'd get an accurate picture on that.
Right, I appreciate that, and thank you for, for looking into it as, as much as you did. It was just kind of a curiosity to see how we related to other towns since we were using officers per thousand population to relate to other towns. I thought this might be another bit to, to add to the picture.
Sure, and that was, if you notice that one document that I did create, and I tried to create it based on that question, the per capita spending for police. So looking at each department on that comparison list for officers per thousand, taking what their just individual police budgets were, and then extrapolating out based on their population to indicate what dollar-for-dollar they paid for that budget for their population. So, but that was, again, the closest that I could do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Was, was there somebody else that, that wanted to speak? John, did, did you have a question or comment?
No, it was answered.
Okay, it was answered. Very good. All right. Any other Board of Finance member have a any outstanding information requests? Okay, seeing that has any further questions, we can close old business and move right into our budget deliberations. So tonight, obviously, we begin deliberations on the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two town budget, which includes the general government budget, the Board of Education budget, and the capital budgets. I've asked our board members to prepare some opening remarks on their over, their overall view of what, how our economy is doing, and their overall view of the budget as it was presented to us. So that's how I would like to start off deliberations by just getting a twenty-thousand-foot view of kind of where we're all thinking about this budget. So, Anne Chikello, can I ask you to kick that off for us?
Okay, I kind of did some more general remarks. They're short, because I know we have a long evening in front of us. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the twenty-twenty-one Board of Finance Budget Deliberations. This past year has been a roller coaster ride for all of us, both personally, emotionally, and financially. Last March, when we were hit with the COVID-nineteen virus, we naively thought that the pandemic would be over by the summer. Then we thought it would end by the fall, and then we hunkered down for the long winter of sickness, loneliness, and rampant unemployment, a bleak outlook. But fortunately, we are finally coming out of this bleak period. Our kids are back in school full-time as of April fifth. And two days ago, Governor, Governor Lamont removed all the COVID restrictions except mask-wearing as of May nineteenth. COVID-nineteen also impacted our Board of Finance, because as you know, last year, we had to pass a budget without a referendum, and we kept the tax increase to a zero-point-one-seven percent increase. This year, I'm happy to report that there will be a referendum, and the residents of Eastline will have a chance to cast their vote on the budget we passed tonight. As part of the budget, the Board of Education of the town have included many requests for additional fundings for services such as math coaches, mental health professionals, additional teachers, and additional police, to name a few. These requests may sound reasonable, reasonable, but as a Board of Finance member, I must determine if now is the right time to burden taxpayers who have struggled financially during this pandemic. It is my duty to balance the need to keep taxes reasonable and affordable for the taxpayer with the need to provide affordable, quality, quality services to the residents of Eastline. Therefore, for this budget, as I balance these considerations, I think we can keep any tax increase reasonable and affordable, while also continuing to provide the excellent services which makes Eastline such a great place to live. Due to the significant financial strain caused by the pandemic, now might not be the most prudent time to approve the extent of additional personnel which the Board of Education in town wants. So my job tonight, along with the other Board of Finance members, will be to examine all the needs of each department and board, prioritize their needs, and fund the most pressing needs of our town. Thank you.
Thanks, Anne Chikello. I see Chief Finkelstein has his hand up, but we, we are in the middle of deliberations now. So Chief, if you wouldn't mind just perhaps giving me a private chat to let, to let me know if you still wish to speak, or whether you just forgot to take the hand down. Okay, thank you. With that, let's, let's move on to Anne Santoro. Thanks, Anne Chikello. Thanks very much for your prepared statement. Anne Santoro?
Thanks, Camille. Thank you. Yeah, I, you know, year two of, of very difficult budgeting, I would say. So, you know, in trying to give, let's say, the bird's-eye view of, of how I approach the budget, basically, there's, there are two components. Try to make this brief. First, I look at the context in which our budgeting has to take place. And I'll come back to that context, and it's basically an economic context. And there's also a process that I try to follow, and I discussed this last year, as I recall. And it's the basic, the process, the procedure, the approach I take. So always the basics. I look at the revenue first. I assess needs and how they're well-articulated, those needs are, what, what evidence is given to justify the, a particular request. And we, you know, you, you take a close look at new requests, new needs, and then you need to look back and say, what did we defer last year, particularly in the pandemic year of, of last year? So that's the basic approach. Going back to my first point about the context in which all this analysis takes place, and I think this is true for not only myself, but for my fellow board members, looking at the overall economy. It sort of puts you in a mindset, you know, of how, let's say, more open or less open you are to, to new initiatives and this kind of thing. So overall, and I'll come back to why this is, I feel as though this year I can, you know, remain conservative, but not severe, let's say, not, not draconian, and particularly because of some federal, federal funding opportunities. So I feel a little differently this year than I did last year, where things were more uncertain. So that brings me to a little bit of an economic, if I could take a moment, economic sort of, you know, context that we have to operate in. And basically, we've been given this, you know, we've been given this, you know, dealt this hand, so to speak, and we're basically kind of in what I would call a mid-pandemic economy, if you will. We're certainly not at the beginning, but we're not at the end, and I think that's pretty critical. You know, economies at all levels, from the most local to, you know, global, are all recovering and trying to recover, trying to come out of the pandemic, you know. And so, you know, that, that creates a whole set of stresses and strains. On top of that, in the United States, we've had, we've had an election and an administration change with policy changes, many of which have significant economic, you know, repercussions. And so the overall effect of this is that we have, basically, I think, a mid-pandemic economy that's in flux. And so we have positive developments, we have negative developments or pressures. You know, positively, we have the, the original pandemic winding down. And we, but yet we have variants that could become problematic. We have, on the positive side, we have an influx of federal assistance, which is fabulous, but that comes, you know, at, at the price of, you know, taking on more debt, more stress to the taxpayer, higher energy prices, higher interest rates, which are happening, and maybe even inflation by, by the fall. So that's just my little economic analysis, but, you know, it is, it's not easy. In some ways, it's almost more complicated this year because of the varying stresses and strains, I think. We have a little more clarity, because last year we were really shooting in the dark, if you will. We just didn't know the nature of the pandemic. We couldn't see, certainly, certainly see a vaccine on the horizon, and luckily for that. So that being said, that's the context. I've mentioned the approach. I, you know, I've made certain adjustments on the town side, some adjustments on Board of Ed side, and, and I have a set of questions on our revenue side. So that's my overall approach.
Okay, very good. I appreciate it, Anne Santoro. Thank you. I'd like to turn to our other veteran member on the Board of Finance. That would be John Birmingham.
Okay, COVID has set us back in a lot of ways, one of which is the economy. The economy should become better, because as we go on, businesses will be reopening with more and more people getting vaccinated, along with all the stimulus money coming into society, into the hands of the people. Some of the positive things at the moment, the consumer, the consumer price index is up, retail spending is up, the stock market is up, unemployment is down. The reduced jobless claims is a result of people not going to work because of the stimulus checks they receive on top of the unemployment checks. So they make more money staying home than they do going to work. And this causes a problem for manufacturers and retailers, because they can't find employees to work. So you say, so what? Well, with a minimum on employees, they can't expand, and they can barely maintain the business they have. The sooner the way the prices go up, inflation goes up, interest rates go up, which affects all of us. This is an oversimplification, but we should be aware what probably will happen when all this stimulus money stops. But we have to make wise choices on the budget, like we're going to do now. As far as the town budget, I think we have to look at it on its own merits, irrespective of the money coming in from the federal government. We have to find ways and save, ways to save where we can, and then utilize the federal funds later where the important needs are. Like Anne, I have several things on the town side and some things on the Board of Education side that I'm kind of on the fence with. So I'd like to hear, once we get to that point, what some of the other board members have to say about certain items in the budget.
Great. All right, thanks, John. Who would like to go next? Peter, a few brief comments?
Sure, thank you. I guess I want to start out by saying that I'm a long-term resident of Eastline, and I'm very proud to be I'm a long-term resident of East Line and I'm very proud to be a resident of East Line. And listening to Steve Rebolowski talk brought back memories. I remember when he was a police officer in town. I was in high school with Steve Rebolowski. And I, and he reminded me, that's the reason why I'm on the Board of Finance and active in the town is because of the town that we live in, the history of the town. And I'm proud to be in it, and I'm proud to be part of the town process. That being said, just to touch on a couple of points of how I'm going, how I'm approaching these deliberations, I'm coming in with the mindset that the economy is uncertain. I think that, you know, I agree that there's, you know, stimulus money and that sort of thing, but I don't think that comes without a price. So I'm, I'm uncertain about the economy, which leads me to be conservative in my approach. I think the town budget that was presented to us was, was very good. There's a lot of flat funding in the department. It was not a lot of, you know, unreasonable requests. The two big requests that have been touched on by the other speakers, the Board of Ed budget is, is asking for some increases, and of course, the Police Department is asking for increases. I think we need to be cautious in how we approach that, given the uncertainty of the time that we're in. Anne was talking about COVID. I don't think we're done with COVID yet. I think that we're in for another surge. I think there's going to be more complications before we're free and clear of it. I am confident that the Board of Finance is going to have different divergent views on how to approach the budget. I've been through a couple of budget processes, and I'm confident that there's going to be different viewpoints on how to approach it. I am prepared to look at all the points of view and probably agree with most of them. However, I think the answer is going to lie in compromise. One thing that I'm going to be looking for and talking about is some long-term planning, especially in regards to the Police Department. I think that, given the environment that we're in right now and the requests of the Police Department, Chief Finkelstein's been pretty clear that he's got some long-term plans. And I, I think that's important, and I think that's good. And I think the, the Board of Finance should be part of that long-term planning process. I'm curious to hear how the other board members view, and I look forward to our deliberations. So thank you.
Thanks, Peter. And now we move on to Rich. Hi, Rich.
Thank you. I am pretty much in agreement with my other board members. I think that in terms of the pandemic, we face less uncertainty than we did last year. However, as Peter just mentioned, I don't know that we're necessarily out of the woods. And the ramifications of the pandemic on our economics, both locally and nationally and globally, are, are far-reaching. I don't feel quite the pressure that I did last year in terms of fiscal restraint. I still think that we need to be very cautious in our budgetary process and try to be judicious in terms of expansion of, of any programs, be they on the town side or the Board of Ed. We have to realize that once additional headcount are brought in, we have all the other expenses, benefits, pensions, et cetera, that, that carry on and on. And it's not just a, a straight salary for one time that we need to look at. The decisions, I think, this year are probably just as tough as they were last year. And I feel as a board, we made some very good decisions last year. And hopefully, we can resolve things in a very reasonable fashion. One note of encouragement for me was we had looked at kind of a worst-case scenario and had taken $900,000 from the undesigned funded balance to be put into this year's budget. It's looking like we may not need to touch most of that. And I'm hoping that that can help to contribute to the programs, both on the town side and the Board of Ed, to be able to get us to the place we need to be, but still try to keep our, our tax increase either zero or as close to that as possible. Thank you.
Thanks, Rich. Really, thank you, everyone, for your very thoughtful analysis and perspective. I think that helps to set a tone for this evening's meeting. Based on everything that I'm hearing, I think that we might be more similar in our line of thinking than dissimilar. So, you know, there's less uncertainty in my mind this year than there was last year. So I'm hoping for, you know, you know, consensus this evening on approving a budget. My focus is, I'm, I'm not as concerned about the economy in 21/22 for that fiscal year as I have been. But I'm still very cautious and mindful of our duties, you know, in representing the taxpayer, because at the end of the day, that's, that's our job, to represent the taxpayers while trying to maintain balance with quality of services and education, and just keeping it affordable for the folks. So when I talk about, when I do the deep dive tonight into certain areas, it's, you know, there's nothing personal there. It, it's numbers. It's, it's just trying to do the best that I can for our town. So I think now what we should do, if I could share this screen, I just want to put a snapshot up of, of where we stand so far. So this is the summary of the budget that, that we're going to be deliberating on tonight. You can see that the, the general government is looking for a 3.89% increase or 732,000. When I looked at this budget, most of the departments really are bare bones. There's, there's not a lot of meat in there to cut. And I'm thankful that, you know, a very keen eye was, was given towards those budgets and making it as flat as possible. I think you'll see this evening that, you know, of course, the, the big increase in the budget has to do with the Police Commission's plan to add 12 officers over the next six years. In addition, there's also significant increases in the Technology Department, the, you know, for the police and the Fire Marshal's Office and the EMD. The dispatchers are seeking a 90% increase in their overtime budget from 50 to 95. So, you know, tho- those are kind of the items that we're looking at. Everything else is, is pretty much bare. So if we are looking to reduce, I mean, obviously, again, nothing personal, but we have to go to the areas that have the largest percentage increases. In terms of the debt service, I would say that that's going down. We're in a favorable interest rate environment. The capital, that's been well-managed again this year. You know, there's not much we can do there. And then, of course, we have the Board of Education. I will, I will say that, you know, when the Board of Ed again started their budget, they, they were at $53 million, which was, I think, probably over a 4% increase in the budget. And, and once again, of their own volition, they got together and they trimmed that a little bit. They brought it down to 52,803, which represents a 3.79% increase in their budget. So when they presented their budget to the Board of Finance a few weeks back, you know, they indicated to us, one, that they were able to fund part of their operational budget with ESAR funds. So that $52,800,000 can come down another $430,000 because they said that they are willing to fund their operational budget with ESAR dollars. I would like to remind the Board of Finance also that the Board of Education last year returned $500,000 to the General Fund. That was unprecedented. That, that doesn't happen. Of course, there was a slight caveat that, you know, at the time, we didn't know what the COVID expenses were going to accumulate to, and there would be a chance that they would need to come back to the Board of Finance for a special appropriation for COVID expenses. And we had expected that all along. They did not come back to us and ask for that money back from the General Fund to cover COVID expenses. Those will also be covered by ESAR funds or ARP funds, I, you know, whichever. So there's some significant savings there. So if we take, if we take the additional 430,000 out, that 3.79% increase in the Board of Ed comes down to 2.95. So that's just a, a little refresher of, of where we are. We did ask the question, what happens when the, when the funds run out? What happens when the grants are all utilized? And I think they had a very good, solid answer and strategy for handling that when the time comes, so that we wouldn't be hit all at once with a significantly large increase in the budget at that time. With that, though, we still must, must carefully consider the plan. The Board of Ed is looking to add 15 positions, as far as I can tell, to the school system in a single year. And, you know, so I, I think that that deserves some questioning. And I know that I have a few, you know, concerns about that, that I'll talk about this evening, and perhaps other board members will as well. So that's kind of where we are. Going to try to share one more screen. I don't know if it's going to work. Okay, can you see this key BOF metric screen? No?
No.
Okay. Give it a minute.
I think you have to unshare first, before you can share again.
Okay, good tip. Where did I get that? Just bear with me a second as I try to call up another screen. Can you see the key BOF metrics? Thanks. So basically, this is, this is just what I was kind of looking at when I was thinking about how we're going to tackle the budget tonight. And year before last, we, well, typically, we always use the 98.4% collection rate for tax revenues. Basically, what that means is that we expect to collect at least 98.4% of the tax revenue, the tax bills that we send out. Last year, we took a conservative approach with the higher unemployment. We said we better drop that down a bit to 98.0. I think we've done better than that, and I do expect to do better than that by the time the final property tax bills come in. So I'm thinking I would like to see that increased again to 98.2, sort of a middle-of-the-road approach. Couple of years ago, we had a mill rate of 28.19 last year. I know I was a proponent of not raising the budget at all because there was no budget referendum, but we reached a compromise and we raised it by 0.17 of a mill rate, so it became 28.36. My goal is to get it around 28.5. I think, I think that's a reasonable increase, given year two of COVID. I'm not stuck on that. That remains up for discussion. I, I think, you know, you know, we're going to do what we have to do. And then I know that some of you talked about the, the fun, the other financing of the fund balance. So for years, we were taking around 175 out of the rainy day fund to help plug that hole in the budget. Last year, we went up to 900,000 in order to keep that mill rate increase low. And I know that our budget books say that we are going to borrow 900 again from the rainy day fund, but I would prefer to see that number come down. So very specifically, that would be my goal. I, can we get there tonight? I don't know. We'll try. I'm sure some compromises will come into effect. Okay, so with that, I'm going to ask one of our board members to start the deep dive. Who would like to go first in presenting what you feel is an approvable budget this evening? Yes, Anne Chikello?
So just a quick question first. Can we discuss the Board of Ed first, just in general from everybody, and then go into the, the government? Is that how you want to do it, or just so we can kind of?
I think whoever wishes to speak should address all sides of the town budget. The general government, the Capitol, and the Board of Ed. So hopefully, everybody's taken a good, hard look at the numbers and have determined where they would like to see adjustments made in each of those areas.
Okay. All right. Well, I'll just start. Okay.
You're brave woman, Anne.
No one's going to be happy after this, but, okay. So Board of Ed, just, I'm going to start from the top. This is, this is what I support. I sup, and I'll explain why, because I think it's important for you to have reasons why I support or don't support something. So the first thing is the six paraprofessionals. That's through the American Rescue Plan, so I do support that. Additionally, I did ask the question during deliberations, and I don't remember who exactly answered, but they did say that you needed a one-to-one for the IEP. So I think that's, that's, that's a requirement. You know, when I see a requirement, then yes, we have to fund that. Dakota was the same thing. That's for the special need kids, and we need that because otherwise, you have to send kids out of district, which is much more expensive. And this way, we have the kids stay in district. The two kindergarten teachers, that was also through the American Rescue Plan. And they were going to be permanent full-time positions as needed based on enrollment. And, and that made sense to me. I feel that there are going to be a lot of children who, or, excuse me, a lot of families who have held their kids back, and there's going to be a great influx of kindergartners. And I think that at that age, in particular, you need to keep the numbers down. You know, these kids are just getting into a school environment, and the smaller class, I think, is, is, is required. And I was also, my understanding that that's going through the American Rescue Plan, and it seemed like Superintendent Newton had a plan as to how to go forward with that and not impact the operating budget. Second-grade teachers, that was also needed, so classes are smaller size, especially after COVID. I'm okay with that. I, I, I could be argued into something else, but, you know, I think that the kids still, the first graders haven't been in school. They're going to be in second grade. They need that. Now, what I do not support are the math coaches, and I'm going to explain why. First, my questions that I asked, they said their time is going to be split 70/30. 70% of the time is with teachers and 30% with students. These math coaches are going to be teaching the teachers in elementary school, two elementary schools and one middle school, how to teach math. They also said that 20% of the students need intervention. The math coach now that is present in one of the elementary schools, I don't remember exactly which one, they basically help 12 students. To me, that didn't seem like it was sufficient enough. If you hire two more in the elementary schools, you're, you're helping 36 students. It just doesn't seem to be enough for me. But what was really the issue for me was when I asked what the background education of the math coaches was. And I asked this just kind of in passing, and the response was they don't have a math degree or a math background. And I asked this just kind of in passing, and the response was they don't have a math degree or math background. And that stopped me short. And I've actually looked at, they sent over the literacy scores, which are significantly higher. And I've been kind of really thinking about this and about how students learn and how they teach at East Line. I had two kids who went through there. And students read, it's sustained silent reading, they read during math class, they read during science class, they read in music class. They read at home because they're supposed to be reading at night before they go to sleep. They read in video games, they read when they're playing board games. So there's constantly readings from the time they're little. Okay, math, you go to math class, you sit there for a half hour, you learn something, and then you go home and you're supposed to figure out how to do it on your own. And so, to me, what, what needs to be done, and whether I can say this or not, is that they need to spend more time with the kids in the classroom doing math because it's a group effort. The way kids learn is by learning from other students. I also did some research of my own on math coaches, and what I learned was that many schools are not showing significant improvement in teachers' practices when the math coaches do not have math degrees. So what I would support would be if people came back and said, I'm gonna do, get a math coach who has a math degree. I don't think it's as important that somebody has a teaching degree, because then you can take any teacher and say, you're gonna be a math coach. And this journal article I read basically said that the teachers were, were not as satisfied with math coaches who did not have a math degree. East Line, everybody loves East Line, everybody wants to work in East Line. So I think that's something that you could do, is get people who have math degrees to teach. In the middle school, the teachers have math degrees who teach math. The other issue with this, I see, is that a lot of times, you realize the students, say, in fifth grade, fourth, fifth grade, start falling behind in math because they don't have the foundations that, that they need. So that's when math gets a little more complex, and all of a sudden, you realize there's an issue there. So I really think that there almost has to be a change in philosophy, and you have to spend more time in the classroom doing math and have the kids do the more of the reading, because reading is a more individual event. So that's why I do not support the math coaches for the Board of Ed. That wasn't too wordy. So I'm not sure exactly what the cost is, but, you know, besides what you did with the American Rescue Fund, which I think is amazing and great, and I applaud you for that. You know, I said an additional two hundred thousand, I, I don't really know, I tried to look through the numbers and couldn't quite figure it out. But that's, that's what I, that was my take on the Board of Ed. I can move on to the general government and cause more havoc, or somebody else can go and talk about the Board of Ed.
Anne, Anne, I, I would like, I would like you to finish your entire thing first, but I am trying to take some notes based on, you know what? So you said that you would like to maybe see the Board of Ed budget reduced by two hundred thousand in total, or, or is that in addition?
In addition, in addition to the four thirty one nine sixteen, which is what they had offered to do with the American CARES Act. Because I, I think that's the amount of the, of the math coaches. That's, that's what I think, I don't, I don't know exactly, but that's kind of just rounding figures, okay?
And you're talking in, in total, okay. Six thirty one nine sixteen.
The, the four thirty one plus the two hundred, so six thirty one nine sixteen. Okay. Okay, where am I next? All right. Have to look here. All right, next, the general government budget. I'm just gonna go through decreases that I see that, that we need. Department one oh one, it's line three eleven. I think it's P T Union, hold on, let me, let me just point at it. I think this was for the floater. And I don't support this because I, I think a floater position isn't really gonna be entrenched where they, they learn enough of any position. And I think it's gonna be answering the phone saying something to the effect of, yes, so-and-so is not here. You know, they're out sick, we'll get back to you tomorrow. So I, I don't support that. Next was the building, one oh four, line two twelve, the building official. I would decrease it by the sixteen thousand eight forty four. This is for additional hours for part-time, if I can read my handwriting. However, the pandemic is coming to a close, and I know there might be another surge, but construction is slowing down. I did speak to a builder in town who said that, no, it's slowing down, so I don't think we need those extra man-hours. The next thing was Department one thirty two. Oh, sorry, I don't have the number, give me one second. Inland Wetlands Agency. Oh, maybe it's not a number, that's why, okay. It's new, it was for a Assistant Environmental slash G I S Planner. That was twenty five thousand dollars, and I'm not supporting that. I know there was a change for the upland review area from one hundred to three hundred feet. But I think I was speaking to Camille, and she, who has spoken to Gary Geishaw, and he said that it really hadn't made that much of an impact. And additionally, during the deliberations, they said that, you know, seventy five percent of all applications just get a desk review. So I don't support that. Okay. Moving on. Department two sixteen, the Public Safety Police Department. Okay. I do not support hiring two police officers. And I, you know, gotten lots of information. I thank the police, the Police Commission for everything that they, they've supplied. They did say that eighteen thousand calls per year, which sounded like a huge amount to me. I was like, oh my God, eighteen thousand calls per year, of course, they need, you know, twelve officers over the next six years, or how many years it is. But I started kind of doing the math, and I'm not a good mathematician. So I divided by three sixty five, and I get down to fifty calls per day. You divide that by two, and you, by twenty four, excuse me, and you get two calls per hour. So I think that's something that these police can, can handle. I do understand and I recognize what they're saying. So that, that's one point. The other point is, we have put a lot of money into the public safety building now. There's a lot more money in the operating budget this year to maintain. Electricity went up, I think, thirty seven thousand five hundred. The custodians are twenty one thousand in Department one thirteen. In addition to that, there's a Police Accountability Act. And with that, the police are mandated by, you know, state statute to include body cameras, psychological testing, training, I T, that went up, I think, sixty one thousand in, in Department one oh nine. And I, I think that what I'd like to see is, this year, we, we take the police we have, we adequately train them. We get them set up with the Police Accountability Act, we get the public safety building up and running. Everything working like a well-oiled machine. Get them, as Score said, the anti-basis, anti-bias, de-escalation, non-lethal force training, and get that all set up. I, I don't see the need at this point for, for extra police. I'm sure I'll have some pushback on this, and, you know, that, that's fine, everybody, you know, has, has their opinion. Now, I did speak to Camille, and Camille, you're gonna have to help me on this one. About, oh, here it is, okay. And this is what I wasn't sure about, so this is something that we kind of have an issue on. With the debt service, there's, which is Department five twenty two, line six forty and line six forty one. We're talking about water and sewer revolving fund. The, the fees for that are four thousand two hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty seven thousand nine dollars. And what I was hoping was that they could use the American CARES Plan funds for that. And I don't know if that's possible, but that's what I had kind of like a question out there to, to possibly do that. So that's kind of my rundown, and I'm anxious to hear what other people have to say. And, you know, I don't know if other people have different cuts or, or whatever, but that's, that's where I stand at this point.
Okay, Anne, oh, oh, thanks, Anne. I was, I was trying to keep track of all the items that you had mentioned. I'm getting a total reduction to the general government budget of two hundred six thousand five forty five. Is, is that what you've come up with?
Hang on, I had give me one second, because I did I wasn't sure what the, the police were for mine. I didn't know it was the one eighty two, two, one, I had one eighty, one hundred eighty two thousand two hundred eighty one dollars, or whether it just estimated one fifty. I wasn't quite sure what that should be. But I had two forty nine, six twenty six, and that doesn't include, though, the, the, the Department five twenty two. Because I wasn't sure if that's something that we can use or not.
Okay, so, um, so the number was two forty nine?
Six twenty six.
Six twenty six, okay. It may just be a matter of you estimating differently for the police, because we don't have real numbers, so.
Well, that's, I didn't know what number to use, that's why I, you know, that's why I said I'm not sure. So whatever number of people, you know, whatever it should be, I couldn't tell you. I just took the one number and subtracted the other number.
Right.
Came up with that, but I don't know if that's accurate. I tend to think it's not, but I don't know.
Okay. I'll comment briefly on the Capitol item, because I too was thinking that the A R P Act said that we would be able to use some of those funds for infrastructure, sewer, water, you know, broadband service, okay, whatever. But it did say that let me see. Well, to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. But in another paragraph, it said, most recent full fiscal year prior to the emergency. So I'm thinking the debt service on, on those general obligation bonds are, I don't know, the, they're Hartford bonds, whatever you want to call them, are way older than that, and so I don't know if we could actually apply A R P funds to pay off that debt. Originally, that was my line of thinking, maybe we could take some of this A R P money and pay off some of the debt. But it, it doesn't look that way, and I think that we're gonna need some professional guidance on that, maybe a little bit later, if anybody else had the same, like, was in the same mode of saying, how could we use some A R P money to reduce the, perhaps, the debt service on our books? That would be a good idea, but why don't, why don't we hold off on that discussion a little bit towards the end, and then we?
Yeah, and I don't know if, you know, it has to go back through the Board of Selectmen to do something like that also. You know what I mean? I'm not quite sure.
Right.
All right, thank you.
So thanks, Anne. I think that was pretty thorough, I think you've get, given us some concrete numbers to work with, you've given us a, a lot of ideas where, where you're looking at specific reductions, of course. You know, we know that the, the Board of Ed had, you know, we cannot advise them where to cut specifically, but we do offer up our opinion just to show that we did put some thought, we're just not taking a number out of thin air and just putting it on paper. But like, there is some thought process as to why we target certain amounts. So that, that was a good job explaining all that, thank you. Okay, board members, who would like to go, who would like to go next? So if nobody would like to go next, we will accept Anne Chakello's numbers as presented. All right, Anne Santoro, you're up.
I'll, I'll go next, Camille, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna, I'm going to just make a comment first about revenues and just give a, you know, some ballpark idea in there about, because Camille, you had mentioned it in your introductory remarks, and let me just find the page on revenue. Here it is. So I think, once we do a deeper dive and we're working on that revenue sheet, I just really do want to pay attention to the, to the tax collection rate. And again, be cognizant of the fact that, you know, we did use that lower rate, and it did help us out to do that last year. And then with fund balance as well, like, I think for me, last year, nine hundred thousand was, you know, quite a stretch. So I'm hoping, as perhaps you suggested, Camille, we can, we can whittle that down even more, so. Okay, I'm going to start, uh, let's see, I'm going to start on the town side. I have a total reduction on the town side that I, or adjustment, if you will, of thirty four thousand seven hundred and five dollars. Starting with Department one oh one, the First Selectman's Office. Similar to Anne Caccio, I, I felt as though the, I understand the need for extra manpower, but I didn't feel this was the solution. And it was a little over ambitious, not in its funding amount, but in what this person would be required to know to be effective. To literally have someone who floats to every department. And to me, it could almost cause more havoc than help, because that person may not be sufficiently trained. You know, going into town clerk's office, which has, things have to be done in every office in, in a certain manner, but in that office in particular, it could be problematic. So, so that's where I'm at with that, I won't belabor that point. Uh, this is in order, by the way, I'm doing this in order, if anyone wants to follow, just in the order that the budgets appear in the beginning of our budget book. So that might be helpful at some point. In next order was Department one ten, registrars. The two registrars had come to us at our meeting the other night, and when they were discussing their budget, did request that three thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars be added back for the additional, you know, work that they've, that they are doing and will continue to have to do with respect to basically canvassing, purging of roles, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm in favor of that, I, I think that we should add that back. Because I think that's, I think they demonstrated, well demonstrated their need. So that's on the, that's on the other side of everything, but wanted to mention that first as I'm going in order of budgets. Inland Wetlands, the Department one thirty two, the Assistant Environmental G I S Planner. This one is a little troublesome for me. I, I, I do see the need for it, because it, it has also appeared in previous budgets. For those newer on the board, I mean, I've seen this request or a comparable request from, from the planning office. The way it's described, it's, it, the idea is good to help planning inland wetlands and the other departments. and the other departments, perhaps engineering, et cetera. You know, I have seen on a, we'll say, not from Board of Finance, but as a resident in the town and interacting through the years with the planning department, that, you know, there is, there's a lot on Mr. Goschel's plate. So this one, you know, I think, at one point, we're thinking of having an intern, a summer intern, a college intern, whatever. So, that being said, I was happy to see we're trying to address it. I think this is a temporary fix, however, for a permanent issue. And perhaps it might be, and I was also happy to see too that we're using a regional resource, the COG. So that was, that was sort of a good, you know, good thing in my mind. However, I would like more information. I'm not sure it was really totally clear. It's an as-needed thing, so we could literally contract with the COG and not use this service. So I was thinking, why don't we reduce it by $15,000, you know, and see if it helps? And then that may give us an idea, do we really need to hire somebody, you know, more, you know, part-time, full-time, or expand, you know, expand on this experiment, if you will? So I thought that was kind of a, maybe a less harmless approach or less onerous approach than, you know, than the $25,000. So that was a deduct of $10,000. Let's see. Brookside Farm Museum Commission. This is a deduct of $3,090, because the curator, it's a small amount, but it kind of offsets the registrar's bump up there. The curator is coming on in January of '22. So it's a half-year situation. So I thought, take that opportunity to balance out what we added for the registrars.
Oh, Anne, I'm sorry, that was Department 134?
Yes, that is Department, sorry, Department 134, Brookside Farm Museum Commission.
And what were you looking, and what were you looking to reduce?
To reduce the $6,180, which now is not, you know, again, it won't be utilized till January. Reduce that by three, half of that, $3,090.
$3,090, okay, got it, thank you.
$0.90, right. Okay, let me have a little water here. Okay, and let's see. Let me just, one moment. Okay, next, I want to address the Police Department request. This is Department 216. So, so here, this is, you know, I've sort of evolved in my thinking. When I first looked at the budget and got the budget book right away, and I saw it, I thought, oh, well, maybe we'll just be proceeding with one additional or a half-year, you know, addition. And I saw that the request was for two this year, as part of a longer-term, from what I understand, plan, which, you know, is not necessarily, you know, written in stone. So obviously, when that was presented, you know, I also, you know, beside the information given by, during the, during the, the presentation of that department's budget, we received, you know, we've asked for and received a lot of extra information. So, you know, putting all that together, I really felt, I started to, you know, put, connect some dots that I hadn't previously connected. And I think the question that I asked in our email exchange, which will become part of the public record, I asked Chief Finkelman and Dan Price to really kind of hone in on the operational aspect of why they needed the officers that they need at this time, why those two officers? And that we went, we were really examining this issue beyond crime statistics, beyond population increases, et cetera, et cetera. So I thought the chief's response was very helpful, because for me, it put it into a context that I, you know, hadn't, hadn't fully appreciated before, because, you know, you're looking at data and, you know, data trends and this and that, and you're thinking, bingo, you're gonna find the answer. But it helped me to look at it a little more organically. So I'm in favor of the two officers. And I'm putting this together, having also read a number of the minutes of the police commissions, various minutes, because there, again, the light went off in my head of the, not only heavy responsibility that the officers have, but the breadth of their responsibility. And with the square miles in town that need to be covered, with the non-crime responsibility of our officers, which is so heavy-duty traffic, with all the changes in our town. And I have lived here, let's see, I've lived here, oh, let's see, 29, 28, 5, 33 years. So I can see, you know, I have seen the differences in the town and the way, in the last five, 10, 15 years in particular. You know, even though population might drop, we have, we have increased, we have grown in other ways. We have a Costco, which is a main attraction for everyone on the 95 corridor, and all that comes with that. We've got more housing, whether it's the apartments or condos or other construction, more restaurants, et cetera. So, you know, I think that, putting all that together for me, I think that, and I think, I think that the two officers are necessary. And for me too, again, going back to the way I look at budgets, I'm gonna look at needs, and I'm gonna look at what we've put off. And it seemed to me that when the force started in 2017, it wasn't necessarily a full complement, and that we were kind of picking away at it to add on here and there. I think this may give us a more, a better complement of help, you know, to help the officers themselves, to help public safety. And for me, of all the things that we look at, every single budget, public safety is the number-one thing. It is the number-one responsibility of the town. If we don't get that right, I don't think we can get much else right. So when you have the ongoing request, and we're kind of picking at it, when I say pick, I mean, as a town, we're adding incrementally. Think we need to address it more fully. Now, saying all this, we are so subjected, and we've all mentioned the Police Accountability Act. Going forward, what I'd like to see, and I think this echoes some of what Anne Cacello was saying, I'd like to see a little bit different analysis one year in, before we, you know, sign on to have, you know, two, 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 and two officers. So let's take a look. The legislation does begin in July, becomes effective, I believe. So let's, let's take, we can step back at that point. We can assess things a little better. Perhaps there'll even be some other analyses that we can professionally conduct. But I think, I think our, to use Mr. Price's words, "I think," which he did at one of the emails, and when he was interviewed by the newspaper, "Our forces are stretched thin." And I think the last place you want to, you want to do that is in the area of public safety. And, you know, on top of that, you know, there's a whole, sort of, we'll say, national or even international, you know, sort of movement at this point that kind of parallels, for me, what was in the 1970s, you know, where police are, you know, literally being put under a microscope. And so I think for them, operationally, there's a pressure that we need to recognize. And we ask a lot of them, and we're putting additional pressures, which, you know, come from different places on earth, from politics, from this, from that. That's fine, but it is a reality that they're living in. And I'd hate like heck to not address this expressed need, and then something happened because of it, because we're not staffed in public safety. So that's my situation there. So lastly, on the whole of the town budget, I'd like to see, and I, Anne started down this alley of the ARP use, I'd like to see the ARP dollars actually used to pay the $100,000 payment that we, on town side, make for the Board of Education Tech Plan, the acquisition plan. Because even though we don't have those Treasury regulations as yet, that's yet to come, which thankfully will shed some light on the four little paragraphs, the four little areas that are outlined in the Act itself for municipalities. I'd like to see that used, because there is the reference to use of money for municipalities, regional governments, et cetera, for broadband infrastructure. So personally, and I'd like to eventually get Anna's opinion on that, but I think we could use that. And I also think we could perhaps use it for the $15,000 for Department 109, on our SIP plan for computers and servers. So, you know, I'm open to ideas on that, for sure. You know, a point, and this might be helpful to the public or anyone listening as well, on the Board of Ed side, happily, they're.
Anne, can I interrupt? I'm sorry, I just want to make sure that I'm keeping track of this. So you referenced Department 109, IT, $15,000. What account?
Yes, so that actually is our, actually, it is information technology.
Right, what account?
Information technology.
We know that's the Department 109, but what's the account?
The, it would be, I'm just going off of our 2022 capital plan, where $10,000 for our replacement of computers and $5,000 for replacement of servers. It's a yearly expenditure that we have. And it's, it's pretty consistent. It's been consistent since I've been on the board.
Okay, so it's, it's.
It's, Camille, it's in Department 724.
Thank you, thank you.
724.
I didn't connect the dots.
Just trying to keep track.
No, that's. Sure, no problem, no problem.
So the $15,000 is what?
It's a total.
I'm asking Anna.
Oh, sorry.
$10,000 is in the account ending in 415. And the $5,000 that Anne is referring to is in the account ending in 100, which is the part of the general fund subsidy, it's the CNARE fund.
I'm sorry, what was the second part one more time, please?
So the second account is the, is the account ending in 100, and it's $5,000 of the total of $137,880.
$5,000?
Yes.
$5,000 of the $137,800. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, sorry for the interruption, Anne.
No problem at all, that's important. So, thank you. So that's kind of where I ended up on town side. Board of Education side, okay. So I'm, you know, on a personal level, and as a Board of Finance member, I've been to so many meetings in the last two years, you know, through the pandemic, et cetera. And I'm so aware of all the ground that is needed to make up, instructional, social, and emotional. You know, we had the loss of learning in Spring '20. We had shutdowns. We've had the limitations of the hybrid model, which all agree about, you know. People really do need and want that in-person, you know, educational experience. And I, and I see the need to address these items, you know, as well as things that we maybe even deferred last year, because we were in this darkness, and we had to kind of find our way, and we didn't want to take on anything extra. So really happy that the Board of Education's been able to reduce its potential added burden on the taxpayers by using the CARES Act dollars, the ARP coming your way. And this is a good thing. Zero complaint from me on that. You know, this is a very appropriate use. And I started to say, as we were getting into the weeds on what accounts we need, what's a good thing, and I'm really pleased, is that when you look at the legislation on the, on the Board of Education side of things, in education, the Act is very specific on uses. I'm sure you'll get more help and more regulation, but it's much clearer. So this is a good thing, and it's, and we're able to apply these funds more sooner and in a way that you feel certain about. You know, the breakdown between, you know, remedial education, making up for deficits, et cetera. Or even your percentages are given, so that's great. So, so as far as, I kind of focused, you know, on added personnel, because that's where things are, so, as we've all mentioned. So in your budget slide, and I don't, I won't share the screen, but I have, I have Mr. Newton's most recent version, the major budgetary requests and needs for '21, '22. And we have, you know, 15 positions, so to speak. And I basically, because you're using, going to use the ARP funding for the paraprofessionals and the kindergarten teachers and the grade-two teachers, I have no issue with that. You know, that's, that's your money to use and to use it as you so choose to fit your needs. And as we, and then going back up the list, I have no problem starting at the top with the high school social worker. You know, I mean, this is, these are, you've identified these needs. I think we've, we've discussed this in detail. I won't, and we can all agree on the social, emotional issues, familial problems people have experienced. So I think that is a definite need. Same with the Coda, having that assistant critical. So coming to math coaches, which seems where we're kind of centered. So I looked at the, listened to what we said at our meeting, looked at the data that Amy, thank you, for sending. And that spreadsheet was very helpful on the DIRG, by the way. That really, you know, helps, helps me out. So my feeling is, oh, help us with math, because now we have the pandemic. You know, we've got, if we were behind before, now we have, you know, pandemic math deficiency as well. So woe are we, right? So I don't, from all that data and the spreadsheet, it seems to me it's a bit of a, like, a mixed grade, grade I would give it, you know, for the efficacy of a math coach. But I'm not, I'm no expert on this. I'm not, I am not an educator. So I defer to you that it is, it is a, a method of getting yourselves out of the situation. And it seems to be, by looking at the DIRG information that you gave, that most of those schools were trying to have math coaches to help them with their scores and their, and so forth. So for me, I'm in favor of the middle school math coach and giving that a try. Again, I don't think it's a panacea. Gee, we have a pandemic and a panacea, okay. I don't think it is a panacea, but I think it's one tool in your toolbox to be able to remedy past problems, the most current and recent problems because of COVID. We already have one elementary math coach, so I'd say stick with that for now. I, because it's a bit of a mixed scorecard on some of this stuff, I was thinking, I didn't want to burden the taxpayer with three math coaches, but I'm okay with that middle school coach. And then as you reassess things, that's where maybe, this is up to you guys, you know, more federal funding for trying to see, putting those extra coaches in, giving them a year, six months, seeing how that works, you know, using those federal dollars for that. So I had to sort of partially support that particular budgetary request. As to your other requests, I'm okay with your IT technician. We deferred that from last year. This is what I was talking about earlier. You know, we deferred some things. I think you need that person. Monitorial aides, looks like you need the hours. I think Jeff, you would describe that. Monitorial aides, looks like you need the hours, I think Jeff, you would describe that at our meetings. And then you have two custodians. I mean, if we need to cut budget, you know, it might be one custodian versus two, but it looks like you've made your case there, I'm open to discussion on that one. So for me, basically, it was the value, you know, in terms of dollars, the two elementary math coaches. And I think John Birmingham had asked Jeff the last meeting, that would be like $61,000 or $62,000. So if you multiply that by two, that's my basic dollar reduction. And then, otherwise, looking at your capital plan, this is something I would like to
Oh, Anne Santoro, I'm sorry, before you move on, so what was the total dollar amount for Board of Ed?
Okay, so I'm just going to use $61,000 as that value, and so it would be $122,000.
Excuse me, Anne?
Yes.
I believe that the presentations that we received or correspondence, there was also $20,000 of benefits to go with that $60,000 salary.
Okay, okay. Yeah, you know, that was, correct, thank you, because I think John had asked the salary. So we need to add $40,000, is what you're saying, Rich? Thank you. So, 162, 100, do I come to 162,000? Everyone do the math, okay? How are we doing there, Amy, on our math? Okay. All right. So, okay. So my last point is just about the capital plan. I liked the capital plan. It's comprehensive, but I'd like to have this discussion as a board eventually, and with Anna's input, because it is a bonded set of items. And in my mind, because interest rates are climbing, you know, we may want to bond, you know, sooner than later, that is, take it as a whole now, rather than trying to chop it up and do it over a series of years. So, of course, that has to, it doesn't, you know, to some extent, it's a little bit of a moot point, because on this whole topic, because we do have to go through the appropriation process with that again. But I would like some input on that. Overall, there's a lot of stuff in a short period of time. So, and I recall that a Board of Selectmen meeting I listened in on, when the Board of Education gave its presentation to the Board of Selectmen, that that was a point maybe perhaps for Selectmen Nickerson had made, that there was a lot of stuff in a short amount of time. So I'd like to look at the economics of that. So, but that's kind of what I have right now.
Okay, so, just to recap, Board of Ed budget, a reduction of $593,916.
So, if we're putting in
plus $122,000 for two salaries and $40,000 for two overheads.
So I'm sorry, so in terms of, I'm not cutting any, I'm not suggesting anything other than the reduction for the math coaches.
Okay, so the ESR funds of $431,916, you don't want to cut out of the
I think they should be used for what they are being used for. I have no problem with that.
So you need to add that to the total of your other reductions, because the Board of Ed's budget that they presented to us does not include the $431. That was just on a slide that they showed us that said, hey, you know, we think we can use these funds to reduce further.
Right, I think the summary of that is in the last page of the slide, where that deduction
Okay.
does come.
So then on general government budget, I heard $34,705?
Yes.
I don't know how you got to that number, my numbers don't add up, but we'll come back to that later. And then I heard $15,000 in capital, Department 724.
Actually, if I'm including that $100,000 plus interest payment, although, see, I'm not sure if that's going to come off Board of Ed's side. It's going to be paid by ARP, but is that coming off, it's our ARP funds, Townside, that's my suggestion. I looked at that.
Roll up into 522 and 523 in debt service then, Anna Johnson, correct? I mean
Camille, so the Board of Ed Acquisition Plan, the funds to pay the annual payments on what they purchased through the Acquisition Plan is in their operating budget, it's in the Board of Education operating budget.
So then you would be requesting the Board of Ed to reduce an additional $100,000 out of their budget and use additional ARP funds to cover that?
That's a suggestion I have, because what they show there is just part of their capital plan, that's actually part of our capital plan and so forth, but it does show up in their basic budget document. But that's a suggestion from me to think about, but again, it's Town ARP, not Board of Education ARP, that would be used to pay for that.
Okay. We'll come back to that. So you want to use Town ARP, you would like to see Town ARP funds used to reduce the BOE budget?
Right, so we could just look at it even more simply, that looking at our capital plan for this year and what we need to expend from our capital plan, you know, and support the various items, that I had two suggestions. One, the funding of the Technology Plan and our information technology, computer equipment, that those two things we take on the Townside from Town ARP.
Okay, I made a note of that.
Okay, sure.
Okay.
Thanks, Camille, that's all I have for now, thank you. And I'm sorry to speak so long, but we have so much information, it's tough to process it all.
Yeah, understood, no, thanks for the time and doing all that analysis, okay. I'd like to hear from one more Board of Finance member, and then maybe we should take a 10-minute break. Yes, John Birmingham, thank you.
I'll go. I'm going to start with the Board of Ed. I had a lot of trouble with the Board of Ed side of the budget, but I kind of distilled it down to a few items. I looked at the item code 613 on the supplies and materials, and ground supplies in 615, and 437 on projects. And I had a little trouble with the figures on that. So what I did was I reduced each of those by a third. Like, 437, I reduced by 7,500. 613, I reduced by 10,000, and ground supplies by 3,500.
That's for a total of $21,000, those three?
Right.
Okay.
Then I moved on, I jumped over to capital. And if you remember, when we were going through the different budgets, I asked about the priorities of all those items. So I figured maybe we could defer a few of those until next time. Or if I have missed something, maybe some of these will be paid by OP. So on the priority list, on priority 7, 8, 10, 11, and 12, I reduced each of those, which totaled $207,000. I can itemize each one if you want.
No. Well, that's up to you, I made a note of the $207,000 reduction, and again, you know, that's just to explain your rationale for how you came up with that number. If you choose to elaborate, that's up to you, John.
Yes. Well, I just thought maybe there could be some reductions on the capital, because there's such a long list, and I took the first six items on a priority list, were the most important. So that's how I came up with reducing the last five, not counting nine.
And what page is that again, so I can just make a note?
Well, it was in the capital.
It's in Section 5, the capital, and it's Fourth page of Section 5.
Not counting the first page, it's the third page in. So page three, not counting the initial page.
Okay.
The next thing I came to was the six items on the staffing needs. I didn't have any trouble with the social worker, I think that's important. As well as the certified occupational therapist, I think that's also very important. I'm going to get back to the math coaches in a second. The bottom three. I don't have any problem with it, since apparently, from what I see, the OP is going to pay for those, if I'm correct on that. Which includes the paraprofessionals, the two kindergarten teachers, and the two grade two teachers. I don't have a problem with that. Now, as far as the three math coaches, in view of the $61,000 for math codes plus benefits that Rich brought up, plus the amount of students that they teach, which I believe we brought up before by Anne, to tell us 12. I feel that right now, there's no need for two of the math coaches in the elementary schools. But I will keep the one math coach at the middle school. And as time goes on, each of those math coaches, the ones for the three schools in elementary and the one in the middle school, if their target dates and their grades increase, that's great. If they don't, then maybe next time around, you can add one more. But I think we do it one step at a time to see how one math teacher in each of the schools will work out. So, my total figure for the reduction in the Board of Ed is $350,000. I added that up, right?
Well, I had, okay, so let's revisit, I think
It's $122,000 for the two math coaches, $122,000.
Right.
$21,000 for the supplies in the project. Plus the capital came to $207,000.
And then, John, you had in the benefits for the math coaches?
What'd you say that number was, $18,000?
$20,000 each, so it'd be $40,000 for the two coaches.
Okay, so now we're up to $369,000, I mean, $370,000. Is that right?
Well, let's say you've got 21.
$122,000.
$122,000 plus 40, for a total of $162,000, and $207,000.
That's $390,000.
$390,000. Okay, and again, and I have to ask, just so we're perfectly clear, that is, instead of, in addition to the ESR fund?
Yeah, $431,916.
So you were looking at a total reduction to the Board of Ed budget of $821,916?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, now, move over to the Town side.
Okay.
Department 101, First Selectmen. Department, First Selectmen's Office, 101. I also had a problem with the so-called Florida, the $25,000.
Okay.
Like we've mentioned before, that person will have to become involved in all different departments and know how to run them with perfection, so I think that's something that maybe looked at later. So I'm going to reduce that part of the Town by the $25,000.
Okay.
The Department 132, Inland Wetlands. I'm kind of on the fence with that. Again, it's $25,000. Because I know there's three different departments on it, planning, wetlands, and zoning. And I know that they're really busy down there. But I feel that they could get a college intern, or somebody like that, to work in at the Department part-time. So I'm going to say I'm going to reduce that by $25,000 also.
Okay, and then wetlands reduction of $25,000.
That's all the reductions I have, but I want to just go over what I feel about the police addition and the two offices.
Okay.
I know some of what I'm going to say has been said before. Town police have 25 full-time and one part-time to protect 18,000 to 19,000 people in town. And that goes up to 30,000 in the summer. And I know it's been said that doesn't count, but I don't know how it can't count. You're trying to take care of twice as many people with the same amount of offices. I looked at approximately 10 towns, similar populations of 18,000 to 19,000. The average police force in those towns are around 36,000 to 37,000 officers. You know, a third more than we have. So East Line is short, 12 offices, and it's stretched too thin. You have to consider all the responsibilities that they have on the job, such as preventing crime, enforcing laws, apprehending suspects, monitoring traffic, responding to complaints and calls for help. And that doesn't count all the accidents on 95 between the Sabre Bridge and New London, especially from exit 71 to 75 in East Line. So when there's a big tie-up, they're also pulled off whatever they're, whatever they're working to help out with that accident. So I don't see how we cannot add two, two offices. And I'm gonna say one other thing. As some of you know, I was downtown for almost 30 years, working in my business. And I saw a lot of things going on downtown that you don't see in the papers. You don't read or see on the internet. It's always stuff below the surface that these officers have to put up with and do. And it's, it's not only that, but you go up to, around exit 72, you got those motels up there. There's a lot of things going on as far as prostitution and drugs. And drugs cause a lot of burglaries, car break-ins. And why are they doing that? To look for money, buy drugs. A lot of this stuff you don't hear about. It's not in the papers. So not only do they have the, you know, the regular stuff that you read about or hear about, there's probably more that you don't hear about. So I'm totally in support of adding two police officers. And I hope the rest of the board realizes how important it is to have these guys added to the force. Now, I know it's been mentioned that we're gonna talk, they're talking about adding 12. We're not adding 12. That comes down the road. Maybe we'll get 10 more, maybe we won't. But I think we gotta start out with two now. So that's about all I have to say as far as that topic. So I just hope everybody sees it my way or sees it to the point where they can vote to put these guys on the force. So my total reduction for the, the town side is, I think, one, one of those 25,000 was 25,500, wasn't it?
501, right. So I have a total reduction on the town side for you of 50,501.
Right, correct.
Okay. Anything else, John?
Uh, no.
Okay. Nothing on the capital side. Okay. Now, I appreciate your comments, John. I, I know a lot of us are struggling, you know, trying to absorb all the data that we've received in the past couple of weeks, even data coming up, you know, to us at the 11th hour today. We're trying to absorb and process. And again, if we don't all agree on this, please, I would like everybody to know that each one of us has the best interests of the town in mind. But with that, I am going to call just a 10-minute break. I think it's a good point to take a small break. It's 8:52. Let's regroup at, at 9:05 PM. How's that? All right. All right. Thank you, everyone. See you in a few minutes. Welcome back, everybody, to the special Board of Finance meeting Wednesday, April 21st. We left off with having each one of our Board of Finance members go through the, the detail of the budget and coming up with recommendations for adjustments. Let's start that conversation again. And I want to move to Richard Steele to walk us through his thought process. Please.
Thank you, Camille. And thank you, fellow board members, for the, the wonderful concepts and suggestions that, that you've already made tonight. I'll start with the Board of Ed. And I'm in, in concurrence with the elimination of two of the math coaches and keeping one at the middle school, kind of as a pilot program. One in that we do have dedicated math teachers at the middle school. So it should be able to help coordinate a program to launch from day one. Additionally, I would really advise, and I, I know I don't have any right to do this, but please make a, a math minor or some math background part of the requirements for your, your hiring and interviewing for this position. The next, and so that, that would be $162,000 reduction. That's inclusive of the benefits. So that's eliminating the two elementary math coaches. The other thing that I need to say about the math coaches, I really feel these really need to be very much hands-on. I know that the current one is 70/30, 30 with the kids and 70 with the teachers. And if I understood Amy's presentation, the new hires would be 30/70. So it'd be 70% of their time with the kids. I was wondering if, since this coach would be at the middle school, if they could team up with the math instructors there to kind of cut back even further on that 30% of instruction time of teachers so that more time is dedicated to students. The other aspect that I, I looked at, at cutting, and I know you've got ARP money dedicated towards this, is one second-grade teacher. And I, I know that the kids at Lilly B. Haynes and Flanders have had higher class sizes than what Nyanix Center has. I don't know if this is a possible strategy for this, but I know with specialists, they work itinerantly between schools. And the numbers that exceed the board recommendation numbers aren't that much over what the recommended allowances are. So if it was an itinerant position, I think you could achieve the numbers that you're looking at. And it could be team teaching with the current second-grade teachers. So that would be an additional 60,000 reduction. And I don't know, is there a $20,000 benefit with that, like with the math coaches? Okay, so that would be an additional 80,000. So that brings it to 242 that I would reduce the Board of Ed, plus the, what is it, the 431916? So whatever that adds up to, to.
673916.
Okay, sounds good to me. Okay. Now, to the town side. That Department 101, it seems to be consensus that people aren't really in favor of that, the floater at 25,000. But I remember in our hearings and presentations, I believe it was the town clerk that mentioned that she could benefit from having additional help. And I liked Anne Santoro's idea about the inland wetlands to reduce that part-time position by 15,000 and have it at 10,000. And I'm thinking maybe that, that position as a floater, not have it be a floater, but have it be dedicated to the town clerk's office and at a reduced level of 10,000. And for both of those, and that would be Department 107. And for both of those departments, 132 and 107, to make up for that $15,000 reduction, I would like that to be put into contingency. So $30,000 to be added to contingency. Just in case these programs have legs to them. And then, this is the one that, that I've really had a lot of trouble wrestling with. And it, it's a very difficult decision, but for the town police, listening to public testimony this morning, this evening, as well as what was read into the record, as well as looking around at different information that, that I've looked at, looking at numbers of officer per thousand population. I think I tend to agree with Anne Chikello to have a zero increase. So that would be a reduction. I am not sure exactly what the salary and benefits are and uniforms, training, et cetera. I'm thinking, I don't know if we've used 100,000 per officer, but whatever has been used by the other parties that, that have already spoken, that would be a, a reduction. And one strategy, and of course, the police have their own budget and control of their line items. But I noticed in response to Anne Chikello's question about staffing, it looked like there was an SRO officer. And I'm wondering if that officer could be converted to a patrolling officer. So that would add one additional patrol officer to the force. Additionally, it sounded like when the chief had presented and previous presentations that we've had, that traffic complaints and calls are probably the, the biggest ticket item that, that we see in town. And so for that, I'm wondering if, to address some of that in a way that doesn't require as much manpower, is if we look at Public Works, Department 317, line item 225, the traffic calming, which is currently at 5,000. If we add 10,000 to that, so that we triple the traffic calming devices that we have and see if that can help alleviate some of the manpower requirements that we have. And that's all that I, I have for, for the town. So I, I'm sorry, I don't have a, a figure for you, Camille, because I don't.
That's okay. If you don't mind, um, let's just, let's just rehash that quickly so I understand. You, you want to, you want to keep in the part-time union position in the First Electment's office?
No, I would like to transfer that to the town clerk.
The entire amount?
I would like to transfer, like Anne Santoro had mentioned about the inland wetlands, to put our, our feet in the water with 10,000 and then to put 15,000 into contingency in case this, this part-time worker works out to be beneficial.
So you want, so again, you want to reduce the First Electment's budget by 25,501. You want to increase Department 107, the town clerk, for some kind of personnel for $10,000?
Right.
Okay. And I think I heard you say you wanted to add $30,000 to the contingency account?
Yes.
That's Department 120.
120.
And, and what was that for?
That was in case the inland wetlands and the town clerk, if their offices call for greater use than $10,000 part-time.
Okay.
That we would have that in contingency. And by putting the 10,000 on their line item for salaries, I, I would prefer not to do that, but I don't think you can just have a contingency for something that isn't a line item, if I understand things correctly. Anne?
Okay. And inland wetlands, Department 132, you want to reduce their budget by 15,000? You want to leave 10,000 in there?
Correct, as Anne Santoro had suggested.
Okay. And finally, when it comes to the police, you want to recommend hiring zero police officers?
Correct.
And then reassign maybe an SRO officer or, or, or one of the police officers to SRO duty?
No, no. The one that's listed as SRO, if I understand that correctly, that's a school resource officer. Maybe I, I don't have the acronym right, but it seems as though we keep paying for increased security in the schools in their budget each year. And.
So you want to assign him to one of the.
A patrol officer.
Okay, I see what you're saying. So that's just not a recommendation. It's just justification for eliminating both positions out of the police department.
Right.
Okay. So, um, what I'm doing is I'm just estimating $65,000 in salary for a police officer. $3,800 is right there in the budget book for a uniform. A, a gun is $800. So I've taken those things out, but if, I mean, I've identified those things that we can use in our calculations. In terms of overhead in the, in the general government side, Department 114 is a separate department for benefits and overhead and that kind of thing. So we kind of have to rely on Anna to maybe give us an estimate of what that would be. And then, as, as well as, you know, FICA, FICA taxes that, you know, that can add up too. If we, if we start to reduce positions in town, there's a, an expense item called fight, you know, in benefits that we can reduce FICA.
Right.
So, yep.
The last item I, I had was to give an additional $10,000 to Public Works, Department 317, line 225 for traffic calming, as traffic seems to be one of the major items in town.
You want to give them an additional $10,000?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'm not sure if I'm reading things correctly, but from the 900,000 that we took from the undesignedated fund balance last year, it looks like we'll have about 300,000 extra that after everything said and done, I would like that to be applied to also help reduce the, the increase in the budget.
Okay.
But I'm not sure if I, if I'm reading that correctly or not.
Yeah. Well, we'll get to that discussion on how much we're pulling from the the general fund, because if we make decisions on the expense side of the budget, then you know, we know the other components that we might have to adjust a little bit. But if I'm adding up your, if I'm adding up your reductions to the general government side correctly, I'm coming and using the police figures that I've just estimated.
Right.
And not yet accounting for overhead there. I'm coming up with approximately 129,701. Does that sound accurate to you?
That's reasonable, because I, I added in some costs too, so.
Right, 129,701. Okay, so let me record that.
Thank you for being my mathematician and math coach.
Well, I think Anna is quiet, quietly doing this as well, and I'm going to rely on her quite heavily to check my numbers.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Rich. So that leaves us with Peter. Before we get to Peter, I think Anne Chikello has a question. Yes?
Oh, Rich, just a quick question. I was just confused. So the floater, you want to reduce by 25,000, $1, and then you wanna then reduce the wetland person to reduce that by 15,000 and leave 10,000? And then the town clerk, you want to give them 10,000? So you're basically taking that other 25,000 and distributing it between the inland wetlands and the town clerk? Am, is, am I right or am I wrong?
No, I wanted to put money into contingency as well so that both of those positions were originally intended for 25,000. And Anne Santoro thought with the inland wetlands, make it 10,000 to see how it works? That's correct, Anne, isn't it? Yeah.
So you want to reduce inland wetlands by, by 15,000?
Yeah, actually, my recommendation was reduce it by $10,000 to 15,000, just as a starting point.
Oh, okay. So we can go with that figure as well for the clerk and, and inland wetlands? Sorry, I, I misunderstood.
So you want to change your $15,000 reduction in inland? So you want to change your fifteen thousand dollar reduction in inland wetlands to ten as well, or do you want to keep it at fifteen?
No, make them both ten thousand reduction.
Ten thousand reduction for inland wetlands and. Ten thousand, you're adding back to the town clerk?
So is it adding ten thousand to the town clerk?
No, no, it'd be fifteen to the town clerk, fifteen to inland wetlands. For the floater position, as was mentioned before, eliminate that, that the shift is to the town clerk since she. Really expressed that she could use more help.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry for any confusion.
So that puts us at one nineteen, seven oh one. Were you changing the contingency from the thirty that you suggested?
Uh, yeah, that would get changed to, to twenty then.
You want to add back, you want to add twenty thousand to contingency?
Correct. Thank you.
All right, so that puts the reduction at. While back up to same thing, one twenty-nine, seven oh one. All right. Okay, Peter DeRosa.
Hi. There's advantages and disadvantages to being last. Unfortunately, I haven't had the time to get into the weeds like the rest of you have. But I do have some thoughts on the, on the budget. As I've said before, in terms of the Board of Ed budget, I had thought all along and the discussion kind of. Shows that the math coaches is sort of a hard sell and kind of a vulnerability with the budget. And I was trying to. I mean, the way I understand it, it's, there's a problem with, with the. With the learning and the math, and this is a solution or proposed solution for it. I didn't really see the data connected to as clearly as I was hoping it would. So I believe. It was Anne Santoro that proposed and a couple of you had supported it, cutting it. By a couple of math and coaches and then watching the numbers and seeing if that works or not. With the option of increasing it at a later date. I would, I would support that. That kind of thinking, because I had a hard time with that conceptually. Right along, but I do see that there's a problem and I do see that that's a solution to the problem. So I think that's one, one fair way of looking at it. In terms of the cutting, the teachers, I'm open to that, although. I guess, you know, if there's a, if there's a consensus to cut one of the second grade teachers, I, I could support that. In terms of the town budget, I'm really. I have to support in terms of responding to what's been said. I, I tend to want to support the floater position. I've, I've seen those kinds of positions really be an asset as, and necessary. And I think it gives the, gives the town hall the ability to move resources around as needed. So, so I'm not really going after that. The inland wetlands, I see a potential influx of permits, so I'm not quick to want to cut that. I, I think there's going to be a lot of activity around that, and I think that's something we have to monitor. With the increase in the upwind review. In terms of the police, this is a big ticket item, and this is where I think really where the action is. I agree with John Birmingham that there's a lot of police activity that goes on that is not in the public eye. And I was intrigued by the statistics that Chief Ficklenstein gave. In terms of the number of calls versus the number of arrests. And I think that the job of the police in terms of public safety is much broader than. Then credit has been given to them for. And I think with the, I think there's, I've, given the, the national. Situation in terms of police, I think we're going to see a lot of changes with the police. So I think the plan of increasing the size of the police department is worthy and I think justifiable. I also think that there's an opportunity with increasing the size of the police. To more meet the needs and rather than just straight police officers. And I think that's going to evolve over time. So I, I, I think we need to keep an eye on that rather than just adding police forces. I think the nature of police work may change, and I'm predicting. That there'll be some unfunded mandates coming down, that police officers will now be responsible for this kind of training. This kind of activity, and I don't think there's going to be a lot of dollars following that. And I think that's going to be a problem that we're going to be facing, so. I, in principle, I support adding the police officers. I think there's, I think there's been a demonstrated need for that. I am open for discussion in terms of whether it's one or two police officers, depending on how the budget looks. Overall, I think that's one of the big ticket items that, that is on the table. So I am not as precise as you probably would want me to be, Camille, but that's.
Oh, that's fine. So I haven't, I haven't heard recommendations for any reductions on the town government side. So what you would probably be in favor of is approving it as submitted?
Pretty much, with the police department being the big discussion, because I think that's the big hike.
Right. But right now, if you were to be polled, you would support it as submitted and open for discussion if we need to compromise somehow.
Absolutely.
Okay, so then what I'm hearing from you, Pete, is. What am I hearing from you? Math coaches are hard sell. Four thirty-one, nine sixteen, Esser. Less, what from the Board of Ed?
I would, if, if, if the votes are there, I would support reducing the math coaches. To by two and one of the second grade teachers.
So three positions. Okay, so. I'm just going to put. So zero for the town. And for the Board of Ed, then just go back. It's about two hundred and forty thousand. I'm just going to put about two hundred and forty thousand for three positions. So you're looking to reduce the Board of Ed by six seventy-one, nine sixteen, leaving the town budget intact? Okay, all right, so I've recorded your preferences. That's great, Pete, thanks. Thanks for that input. Okay, so that leads me to, to discuss. My thoughts on the detailed budget, and I'm going to go rather fast. So that we can start to. Maybe make some decisions. I'll start with the Board of Ed side. I think if you remember my opening comments, you know, there's a lot of money that has already been. Offered up to give back. Originally, I was. Against hiring two new teachers for the second grade. I received a very compelling email from a constituent today. Like I said, stuff comes in up to the eleventh hour, right? And it was compelling to me, and I understood the frustration. Better about what was happening in the past school year, you know, with the challenges that we have with COVID. The reason why I didn't support two kinder, I mean, two second grade teachers initially. Was because of the three schools, right? Like, how do we control? You know, the inequity in class sizes between the three schools. It's easier to do when there's two, but we don't have that situation. And the Flanders and, and Lily B. Haynes were, yes, on the upper range of the recommended class size. That's recommended by the Board of Education, but it was still within the range. But like I said, this email came in and it just kind of tugged at my heartstrings. So I said, okay, maybe there's some way that we can reconfigure those classes and only hire, you know, one additional second teacher. I think I expressed during the Board of Ed budget presentation that I am coming around to math coaches. You know, I, I am all, I, I think education is the great equalizer, right? And I think that our kids have had a really tough year, and I think that we need to do everything humanly possible to get them. Back up to speed and high performing. That's what we're proud of, and, and I support that. So at this point, on the Board of Education side, I would only support. An additional decrease to their budget of one position, which would total. Let me get to that number, just bear with me. We'll say eighty thousand dollars. So the four thirty-one, nine sixteen plus the eighty thousand. I would be looking to reduce the Board of Ed budget by a total of five hundred eleven thousand, nine hundred sixteen dollars. On the general government side. I do not support the new position that was created in the first selectmen's office either. I think that when we heard the budget presentations. That it would be difficult to find an individual that was well qualified to float around into all those different departments. We heard from the tax collector that he's well-staffed, especially since the tax bill. Printing has been outsourced, as we learned for the past several years. We did hear from the town clerk that it would be nice to have someone cover for one of the two people when they're out, and I understand that dilemma. She did indicate to us that they found a really top-notch temporary, so to speak, when they ran into some. Additional staffing requests last summer. And I think that those are the two avenues that we should continue to pursue in order to. You know, backfill positions when people are absent. So I'm not in favor of. That new part-time union position in the first selectmen's office. As far as the building department is concerned. So I don't support that increase either, because I think that twenty twenty was an unusual year in terms of activity. I think people couldn't travel, so they were spending discretionary income on their homes, resulting in an increase in building activity. I don't think that that pattern will repeat itself, but if it does, that's what salary contingency is for, right? In fact, tomorrow night, we have on our agenda, you know, an appropriation request for that very reason. And that's why salary contingency exists. I don't think that we should bake into the budget. A permanent position when the ebbs and flows of the work is what it is. In terms of the registrar's office, I also support the registrar's request to reinstate their original budget request. That was a request of an increase in their salaries of two thousand, six hundred and twenty-three. To bring their salary line item up to a total of sixty thousand, and it would bring their total budget from ninety-nine. Zero seventy-seven to one zero one, seven hundred. I firmly believe that the registrars must be compensated for the extra hours that they've been working. Based on the increased demands of voter registrations and canvassing and review of the voter registration rolls. And they've also indicated that their current salary is based on a twelve-hour work week. But they told us that on average, they work fifteen hours per week. So again, I think that we need to properly compensate our employees when they're working above and beyond. That leaves us with the police. So. Initially, I, I did not support the two officers, the two new hires, for a number of reasons. One, there was information exchanges between the police commissioner. And the Board of Finance, and I had outlined how our population has actually decreased in the past four years by four point six percent. A majority of our population is in the plus thirty-five age group, not really. A demographic that, you know, represents the correlation in the crime. I understand there's some no commercial development in town, but I also see that, that there's some commercial development that is going away, right? The Starlight Motel is one example, being acquired by the state. It will be demolished soon. I mean, that right there is going to be decreased crime, just getting rid of that property. We bought the Honeywell Building, so there's, you know, that's commercial space taken off the rolls. I think the Bob's. You know, department store is still empty, so like, I understand how people may think that we're growing. But nobody ever talks about the things that we're losing, you know? So I'm in favor of increasing staffing when the need is clearly demonstrated. And I think that the police commission, you know. I think they did a good job of putting this study together, I do, and I really respect their passion for what they do. But I'm having a slightly hard time understanding. How a police commission of seven, well, now six members. Well, I'll just share with you, they are all white males, half of whom are previously in the law enforcement agency. So I just have a slight problem accepting that, that lack of diversity, you know, is really representing. You know, what, what our community involvement is, what are, the demographics of our community are. So I would actually like to see, and, and I'll just. Point out that the, the single female police commissioner that was on that board or commission resigned in January of this year, I believe. So we're left with six police commissioners, all white male, half of whom were in law enforcement. And, and I know some of them, and I like them personally, and I respect them greatly and appreciate their, their volunteerism. But I would just like to see a little bit more, more diversity on that board before we accept this six-year strategic plan. That being said, you know, I'm, I'm not an expert, you know, in this field by any means. I also would be willing to entertain. The possibility of adding one more police officer this year. I would also like the board to remember that as our population has decreased four point six percent in the past four years. We did increase the police staff by one person in each of the past two years. So we have been adjusting upward to account for the Costco building going in and a few other major projects. So like to put the brakes on that a little bit and revisit it next year. And so with that, my reductions to the general government side of the town budget amounts to one hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-five dollars. In addition. I think I left out a few things. The zoning, planning and inland wetlands agency had a line item there for five hundred dollars for an individual to conduct Zoom meetings. I think by the time our, our next fiscal year rolls around, a lot of those meetings will be held in person. There's no reason to hire somebody to run a Zoom meeting if they're being held in person. And even if there is, every other board and commission in town, including myself, as BOF Chair, runs the Zoom meeting. Are we perfect? No, but we can do it, and that saves the town money, and I don't understand why. I don't agree with those departments needing that extra help. So that included, so my reduction of one twenty-five included the reduction of one police officer. That, you know, they're requesting to bring it down to one. And I also did adjust general government benefits a little bit for, for the FICA. But I didn't put, I didn't put anything else in there in terms of, you know, pension or, or some of that other stuff. I would need Anna's help on that. I would need Anna's help on that. So, oh, that's where I am on both sides of the budget. I, I know they're very slim cuts. I'm not going to meet my own goal to keep that mill rate to 28.5 unless we make some other adjustments. And I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure that that's the ultimate goal here. I think the ultimate goal is just to figure out what does our town need? What can we afford, you know, to give them without sacrificing a lot of quality? And, and what are our priorities at this point in time? So that's my summary. So in looking at the numbers that we've all discussed tonight, I think that I think that we should make motions separately on the Board of Ed budget versus the general government budget, because I think we're all, well, I'm just going to say we're, we're all pretty close on the Board of Ed word, but we're not. We have a, a high reduction of 821, 916 and a low reduction of 511, 916. So what, let me get some input from my board members. What would you like to do? Would you, would you like to just decide on the Board of Education budget this evening, right now? And then move on to general government? Do you think that that's achievable, given the information that we shared with each other? Does anybody have an opinion?
Um, I'll, I'll start the discussion, I guess, Camille, um, from what you've just said. So I know it's, at this point, we, we have many numbers floating around, some completely accurate, some maybe not so. So I think it's, like, in my mind, it's hard to sort of make motions, you know, based on those numbers. I, I almost feel like we need a little step back and kind of see where we agree, you know, for example, on let's say Board of Education's budgetary request, where we agree and where we don't agree and how quickly we can kind of, you know, come to some understanding. And, and then add the, once we, once we come to some feeling that is, you know, sort of common, then either a motion or, you know, the consensus motion can come forward. Because at this point, there's, you know, there's quite a bit of nuance, even though we're, we're kind of, you know, kind of together on most topics. I think we need to sort out what we're chopping, you know, what we're saying no go to or, you know, revising versus what's in there, you know? Does that make sense?
Well, do, uh, let me just ask you this. Is there some confusion about where we diverge on the Board of Education budget? Based on listening to everybody this evening?
I mean, there's, you know, um, well, for example, on the math coach issue. I mean, we've got, we've got a couple of different takes on that. So let's just be clear where we kind of stand on that. And then I'm a little confused too, because with respect to the second grade teachers, you know, for, for me, since the Board of Education decided to use the ARP funding for that, I kind of took it off of my, you know, off of my list and made no, no judgment on that particular item, because that's a decision by them to use their funds in the way they so choose. And that's not taxpayer dollars. So, um, you know, the last categories there are paraprofessionals, the kindergarten teachers and the grade two teachers, you know, comprise that 400K plus number. So, um, I'm not going to, you know, necessarily engage in a, need to engage in a discussion on each of those things. I think, I think we were at a point before this more, you know, where we needed to figure out, do we need the second grade teachers or not, kind of thing? So, um, so it's really the, you know, it seems, I think we're in, we're in agreement on social worker, the Coda, I think we're a little bit of difference and we can clarify that because Ann had different feelings about the math coaches, Ann Chacello. And then John had some concerns about, um, the capital plan and I believe, um, you know, supplies and a couple of other categories. So it, I think we just need to, you know, uh, come to consensus on some of those things.
Yes, Ann Chacello.
I'm Camille.
Okay.
Uh, excuse me, John, uh, excuse me, John, Ann Chacello had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, so what I was going to say is, and I just, this is kind of logistics. If we come to a consensus on the Board of Ed, say, right? But then are we going to know? I guess I'm concerned about where the mill rate's going to end up, because, you know, we might come to consensus, but then it might be still too high for where we want it to be. Does that make sense?
So you want the ability to go back and revise it downward if we can't come to consensus on the town side?
That's what I'm thinking, because otherwise I think we're going to, you know, put, put ourselves into a corner. That, that's just my concern. I'm not sure, you know, I, I know last year we did it, you know, a certain way and I don't know what you've done other years, but.
No, every year, every year, it's like a different, it's a different method. Because it largely depends on the input from the Board of Finance members, right? I mean, some years it's just really easy and sometimes it's not. And sometimes people agree and sometimes they don't. So, you know, I just felt that we were, we were kind of, you know, well, I thought we were kind of in agreement about the Board of Ed, because half the work's already been done for us, right? I mean, there's very little to decide. We do know that we have no control over, you know, if we recommend a budget reduction, right? We do know that these are just suggestions of, you know, from the Board of Finance of what they might be able to do. But ultimately the decision is theirs. So whether we want to cut, so to me, it doesn't necessarily matter if we come to consensus on, yes, let's cut two math teachers, because that's may not be what happens at all, you know? Or two second grade teachers, or let's cut the math coaches, like, it's not up to us.
So just the number.
It's us to deter, it's up to us to determine what is the reasonable budget that we can put forward to the voters of East Line.
Okay.
So, so, um, Camille, could I just clarify?
Uh, first, let's, let's listen to John Birmingham.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, uh, Camille, could you read off the numbers for each of us for the Board of Ed? Not counting the 431.
Not counting the fourth, well, now, John, come on. Oh, well.
To everybody, but I just want to know.
All right, all right, let's see if I can do this.
Oh, Camille?
Yes.
Yeah, I have those numbers if you want me to read them.
Great, yes, Ann, I would love that, thank you.
Um, Ann, Ann Chacello, 200,000. Ann Santoro, 162,000. John Birmingham, 390,000. Richard Steele, 242,000. Pete DeRosa, 240,000. Camille Alberti, 80,000.
Anna, sorry, who was the 162 and the 390? I'm sorry, I missed.
Ann Santoro, 162 and John Birmingham, 390.
Camille, can I ask a question?
Uh, not technically.
Okay, anyway, um, I think John, John's, uh, input was on, there was an item on capital, which is not part of the operating budget.
Yeah, so it's not a question, it's really, you're, you're going to make a comment on something.
That's a, that's a comment.
Right, right. Well, well, yeah, so I'll allow you to speak, Tim. Because really it was a question that one of our board members had that you want to address in a comment.
Yeah, okay, it was, it was just, it was just John Birmingham's point about, um, prioritizing the capital items. And a great, great, great comment. And that, that was a significant chunk of the 390,000 that he had proposed, which is separate from the operating budget.
Yes, that's a very good point. Thank you, Tim, that's important.
Camille?
Yes, Ann, Santoro.
Um, thank you. Ye- yes, definitely, because, um, that, I didn't, I don't want us to necessarily get to a consensus on an item. And I understand that with respect to the Board of Education making their own decisions. But I, where we had some difference of opinion, I just wanted some conversation. So that's why I brought up the, um, the capital plan. John had mentioned his approach. I had asked my question, uh, which may require Anna's input, I would like her input actually, on the sensibleness of, you know, taking all of those items in a short amount of time, you know, rather than spreading them out because of, um, the way bonding will go into the future. You know, in other words, we will have higher interest rates. So is this a good time to hunker down and say, okay, it's a lot in that, in that plan, but we're going to go out to bond, we're going to get favorable rates and favorable terms in the year 2021, if we do an August bonding or something, versus spreading it out, um, which is also John's approach. So I think we need a little dialogue on that. In addition to Tim's point about the, you know, you're not really adding that totality of everything, because if we make a, made a payment in the year 22, 2022, it would not be the total of this, you know, this plan. It'll be, it would be a lesser amount because of the bonding. Thanks.
Okay, well, I just, what I'm trying to avoid, what I'm trying to avoid is going around and around and like coming to consensus on one thing. And then, um, the number's not working back and then we have to revisit it, revisit it again. I think I'm just really anxious to try to determine what makes sense for the town. We know, uh, the sheet that, let me see if I can share it. Anna came up with a very interesting sheet for us, right? Can everybody see that? On the left-hand side, it's like, what if our tax collection rate were set at those percentages? This is what the mill rate would be, given the proposed budget as presented to us, right? Um, and that would, the third column identifies what the mill rate increase would be, given those tax collection rates and the budget as presented. If we wanted to match the increase that we did last year of .17 mills, this is how much we would need to reduce the entire budget by. We know that the Board of Ed has offered up 430, almost 432,000 out of ESAR funds to help close that gap. And the last column identifies how much we would need to eliminate in order to get to that goal of a .17 mill rate increase. So when you look at this last column, really the question becomes, what do you feel, and, you know, I know this has been in your hands for quite some time now. The question becomes, how much of that do you want to pull from Board of Ed? How much do you want to pull from capital? How much do you want to pull from the general government side? What kind of revenues might we be able to increase to close this hole? And, and how do we want to treat, you know, the pull from the, um, the, uh, fund balance to close that gap? That, that's what it comes down to. So to, to try to reach consensus on whether we should eliminate, you know, the math coaches or not, it, it, you know, it's really immaterial. It's not immaterial to me, but it's just like that, it's a number that you have in mind that you want to reduce. And how much are you willing to negotiate on that number? That's what it comes down to. So I think earlier in my, um, opening remarks, I said I would sort of like to settle on a 98.2% collection rate for this budget season. If we approve the budget as proposed, we're looking at a .51 mill rate increase. Not, not terrible, given the low increase we had last year. But it, to get to that .17, all we have to do is find an additional 328,000. To me, that's really, um, not that difficult.
Oh, how realistic is that, 98.2?
Anna Johnson, can you respond to John's question, please?
So this year we used a 98 point, a 98, uh, 98% assumption when setting the mill rate. And at this point, we are, there, there are some struggles that, that have been identified as to whether or not, um, you know, we will take in all of, um, all of the tax collections. But I, I mean, is, is that going to mirror itself next year? I, I, I don't have, I don't have a, a crystal ball on that. If, if the board were going to consider increasing, um, you know, the percentage of collection, I, I would be more comfortable going from 98 to 98.2 than from 98 to 98.4 as we, um, see what the next year is going to bring us. With that said, I, you know, I'll also comment that, um, our collections, um, so far month to date, have, have been significantly greater than the Aprils, you know, in the Aprils that we've had in the past. So it's, it's more like we're, we're, this is like a catch-up month relative to people who were waiting longer to pay their taxes this year.
If I may also point out, when you look at the revenue sheet that Anna provided to us at our, for the period ending March 30th, you will see that the collection rate for prior year taxes is at 110%. So just because we set the mill rate, I mean, the collection rate lower, doesn't mean that we're never going to collect those taxes. I mean, they're due at some point. We just might not get them in that fiscal year. As the budget or as, you know, the, the financial reports indicate, again, we're already at, at the end of March, 110% of the amount budgeted for the prior year's collection. Anna Johnson, please feel free to correct, correct me if I've misstated something.
Yeah, I, um, I did, was it 1, 100, uh, 110 or 101%? Well,
For the prior year, we had this 109.58.
Okay, all right, that would be correct then, yes. I do know that in the previous, at least two years, we were collecting greater than what we, than one, than what we projected.
I think with unemployment going down, still not at the, at an ideal level, but still trending down, that's why I would feel comfortable increasing, you know, that collection rate to 98.2. I don't yet feel comfortable to raise it back to 98.4, which we used for years and years and years and years. You know, like, I, I do prefer to take a more conservative approach there.
Okay, can I, can I make a comment?
Yes, Peter.
The 98.2, uh, makes a lot of sense. We were very uncertain last year at this time when we were doing the budget. And, and we, there was a lot of information we did not know. And we know a lot more this year, uh, in terms of what the future looks like than we did last year. I remember, you know, the, the sense that we had as a board was just, just uncertainty that the, you know, and that, and I thought we were being, you know, we, we took a slight cut in the expectations. I think going to 98.2 makes a lot of sense. And I, and I'm more, much more optimistic about the future now than I was then, although I think there's still uncertainty. But I, 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 I think the numbers are showing that, um, that's reasonable. And I think, uh, we'll see more collection on taxes as people go back to work. And I think, you know, we're going to see more of that. And, you know, we had more stimulus money this year than we thought would happen, you know, uh, last year. So we didn't take a big hit with collections. So I'm comfortable with the 98.2.
Okay, thanks to Peter. Are you comfortable with coming up with about $328,000 worth of reductions?
I.
To get to .17?
I think so. Uh, you know, that's. Uh, you know, that's.
Okay. So Anne Santoro, does that help you to get to a place where we can decide on the budget one side at a time, or not yet?
Well, I mean, I, I'm glad we've had that, uh, approach, the discussion about the collection rate, because at some point or another, we've got to, we've got to do that. And I'm, I'm of a mind of, while, while it's on the table here, ninety-eight point two, uh, myself, uh, not going as high as we had been in the past. And, uh, that's kind of where my, my head is at, and also based on Anna's information. Um, but I'm still, uh, still want to kind of go back to my point that I, I think we need to have some discussion about the items suggested to, to cut, or to amend, or to, uh, somehow modify. Because, um, otherwise I don't see how we can, you know, start, you know, coming up with, um, totals, you know, of what we will adjust by if we're not sure precisely, uh, how we got there. So, you know, i- if everyone's saying, all math coaches, no math coaches, that makes a difference in the number. So i- if we, we need to have that discussion before we get to the number, is what I'm simply saying. Thanks.
Yeah. Anna? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, you gave me the numbers for the Board of Ed, can you give me the numbers for the town?
In terms of, oh, what, what the reductions were?
Yeah.
You know what, actually, to be honest with you, I think, um, Camille tracked that better than I, I did.
Okay.
Okay, I will tell you what I have, it's probably not perfect, but, you know, it's, um, an estimate. I came up with a reduction on the town side of one twenty-five, five thirty-five.
Yeah.
Anne Chikello came up with a reduction of two forty-nine, six two six. Anne Santoro came up with a reduction of thirty-four, seven oh five. You yourself came up with a deduction of fifty thousand, five oh one. Rich Steele came up with a deduction of one twenty-nine, seven zero one. And Peter DeRosa wants to adopt the budget as presented on the town side.
So we had no reductions, you said Anne Chikello had what?
Anne Chikello, two forty-nine, six two six.
Six six, okay, thanks.
So in years past, what we've done, um, I mean, I, I don't even know how to begin to accomplish what you're suggesting, Anne Santoro. I, I don't, you know, I don't think we're going to reach consensus on which positions to eliminate in the Board of Ed and, you know, paper supplies or whatever else was recommended, you know, I, I just don't know how we do that. I just think we have to focus on a number and let the Board of Ed go back and do their work.
Sure, Camille, I, I mean, I have no problem with the Board of Ed doing what they normally do and we're, we're staying in our lane, they're staying in their lane. But I, I mean, I cannot jump to a number if I haven't discussed with my peers here what their concerns are, and if I differ from them in their viewpoint, let's have a little bit of conversation, you know.
So why don't, so let's not labor this, let's start the discussion then. Let's, let's spend, it's ten oh six, let's spend fifteen minutes having that discussion. And why don't you lead us off?
Okay, so, um, so for example, it seems like there's, um, there are three different approaches to the math coaches. There's, um, a number of us that just say one math coach rather than, um, rather than three. Uh, Anne Cacello did not want any, and if I'm incorrect, please jump in, tell me I'm not correct on that. And then, um, uh, I think, Camille, you were thinking two, is that correct, as opposed to three? Am I correct?
I, I was thinking, I would, no, I was supporting the math coaches this year, and I was suggesting eliminating one of the second grade teachers. Now, if that was going to be paid by ESER funds, so be it, then take the eighty grand from somewhere else.
Yeah, okay, I mean, that, that's fine, but, um, okay, so, so that works as well, I guess. But, I mean, in order to come up with a number, you know, since we're assigning value to, um, the math coaches, their salaries, their benefits, um, you know, it would be just helpful if we, you know, had some conversation about that. Any change of mind, or people are just kind of?
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, sure.
Camille, you're still sharing, could you maybe take it off?
Okay.
Yeah, just
So everybody has those numbers written down, I'd like to, I'd like for you to keep those top of mind, okay?
Okay, thank you, just so
Yep.
It's just easier to see instead of just looking at the other thing. So what, I just have a question first and then a quick comment. John Birmingham, um, talked about the capital budget. So is his number accurate of three hundred and ninety thousand then, if he was talking about the capital? So I think his might be different. So what is his number then? That, that's my question.
If you take out the capital, which I just did, it comes out to one eighty-three, one hundred and eighty-three thousand.
Okay, so, all right. All right, my next comment is based upon hearing
Two eighty-three, John, I'm sorry, isn't it two eighty-three, John? Um,
It was two oh seven subtracted from three ninety.
Okay. Got it.
Okay, so, um, my next comment, just be quick, um, is that I, I understand what people were saying about having the math coach, coach in the middle school. Um, and I know we're not supposed to be talking exactly, but I agree with that because I would agree to a ma- uh, somebody in the middle school, just to see how it goes. And then assuming that if you're dealing with math teachers who already have the math degrees, hopefully they could get a math coach there that also has a math degree. So I would be good with that, just to kind of try to get the conversation going and try to get, you know, to come to some agreement on some number. I think that's reasonable. I also think that the tax rate at the ninety-eight point two is reasonable, um, given the change in the economy. And that's all I had to say.
Yes, Rich Steele.
This, this might be overly simplistic, but I think generally the discussions that were had on the Board of Education budget were pretty much, you know, with the eighty-twenty rule in agreement on the, the different issues. And since we don't have control of the Board of Ed, um, budget, maybe we just drop the high, drop the low, and average the other ones in between. And that way we have a number.
That's a nice, um, that's a nice approach. And I think if you wanted to take that approach, anybody, let me remind the board members, anybody is free to make a motion at any point, you know, and we will vote on it. Um, and, and so if you're still not convinced that it's the right thing to do, just vote no. Um, I will make the comment that it's interesting to me that we, we accept, some of us accept, um, you know, the recommendation from the Police Commission wholeheartedly, you know, we're embracing that. And yet, we're not really embracing what the Board of Education folks are telling us, um, that they need to get the performance, you know, elevated, and to bring those students back up to speed. I mean, the, these are, these are actually the folks that work in the Board of Education that have spent a lot of time poring over this budget for six months, doing the deep dive, doing part of our work for us. And so personally, you know, my opinion doesn't, it shouldn't really carry that much weight, you know. I'm just focused on the number. And to me, I want to leave it up to the Board of Ed folks to decide, you know, I think it's a good plan. Let them decide what is, their priorities are, you know. So I can, I can say all day long, don't hire three math coaches, you know, I don't support that. Well, if I don't support it, all I have to do is say, I'm, I'm really going to withhold two hundred and forty thousand dollars from your budget for three positions. That's the only thing we can do. So to belabor the point of what we want to support and what we don't, I think is, you know, that, that's my input. So now, so now we've heard from Rich and Anna and myself, I don't know if Peter or, um, oh, who's left? And I think we've heard from John, but Anne, um, you know, we started the discussion.
That's great, and we had some discussion, which is all I was looking for. I didn't want to make a federal case out of it, but thanks, Anne Cacello, for, for your comment too, because, uh, and for your thoughts. So with that said, I'm going to make a motion. Um, so I'm moving to, um, make a reduction in the Board of Education budget of one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, uh, by Board of Finance, let's say, we can, I can rephrase this, uh, and then taking into consideration an adjustment made by the Board of Education themselves, so that that's clear, of four hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars, as that is their choice and not ours. So that would be my motion in, in so many words.
So Anne's motion on the table, she is moving to reduce the Board of Ed education budget by five hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars.
Um, Camille, I
Hit the number again, Camille, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, Anne is moving to reduce the Board of Education budget by five hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars.
And I, I would just like to add the verbiage in that motion, that four hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine hundred and sixteen dollars of that is, um, by way of the Board of Education's A R P reduction. Because for the public to understand this, for anyone looking at this, it would be, look like, quite honestly, Board of Finance is cutting this huge amount when it is in fact a hundred and sixty-two thousand requests. So I ask that that language be put in there, into the motion, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Can we please have a second, and then we can open it up for discussion?
I'll second it.
Okay, thanks, Rich Steele, all right. Any further discussion on the motion on the floor?
Just, uh, Anne, how did you come up with the one sixty-two?
This one sixty-two, John, was based on, um, my looking at, um, the requests asked, uh, new requests of staffing and zooming in on the amount that would, uh, that would cost for adding the math coaches. And, um, the request was for three, and I felt as though one would be appropriate. Um, I've, I've left the rest of the, the budget intact, uh, you know, in large part also because of the use of the American Rescue Plan. So I, um, and my feeling is also not to, not to, to, uh, deal with the issue of the capital plan, uh, again, that's a discussion we could still have. But, uh, uh, if we're going to do it in one fell swoop and think that bonding this year is the smart thing to do, you know, then that's the way we go.
Yeah, the reason I asked was, I was, uh, Rich's comment about kicking out the high and the low, and I took the three, it was in the middle, which were in the two hundreds, and I came out with two twenty-seven.
Well, you know
Want to go that route, or you just want to go?
So for me, this is just a budgeting approach that I take, and I talk about my process. If, if I'm going to, even if it's Board of Education, they do what they will with their funding, I still to, need to give evidence in my mind of why I'm suggesting a reduction. I'm not going to just pluck out a generalized number. I've got to see that it, it relates to something in that budget that was troublesome or for which, uh, you know, not enough data was given, whatever the rationale. But I just can't pluck out a number, uh, unless we're, we're in, you know, pandemic, uh, two or three, and we have to really put a freeze on everything, and, and we're all up, up the creek. But when we're, you know, in a fair state of normalcy here and budgeting under normal conditions, uh, I've got to relate my suggested, um, you know, change in the budget to some item, something real. And here it was the two math coaches, their salary, their benefits, and that's how, how I created the motion.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you, thanks for your question.
So, uh, I have a question then. So I just, um, if we go along with a hundred and sixty-two thousand, um, plus the four thirty-one thousand, of course, um, then, correct me on my math, we wanted to get a reduction of three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, right, to get to a point one seven, I think it said on that piece of paper, or that sharing screen. So then we need another hundred and sixty-six thousand from the general government side? Is, am I correct in that?
You are correct, Anne, somehow we have to make that difference up between the general government, uh, adjusting some revenues, um, or, um, what else can we do? I mean,
Yeah, well, one, one thing that I did suggest, if I could, just quickly, is that, Anne, um, a good question is, um, you, you know, using the town A R P funds to pay the hundred and fifteen, approximately a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in tech that we, we will need to pay this year under our capital plan. So that's, that should be helpful, if, if we feel comfortable doing that.
Just another question then, does that go in the operating budget? Does that come off of the one sixty-six?
I'm going to let Anne, Anna
You know what I mean? I'm, I'm just, I just don't know if, if that's a number that, that can be used to be taken from three to three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, the number you just said, Anne Santoro.
Yeah, so right now, the motion that you have on the table is to deal with making a reduction to the Board of Education budget. Um, if it's, if at some point it was determined to use the town's ESER money to make a payment on what we purchased with the acquisition plan this year, that ends up being a, a reduction to the Board of Education budget. However, with that said, we do not have all of the information that we need relative to determining the proper way to expend those funds. What concerns me here is we're, we're using the money to make a payment on infrastructure, you know, on technology infrastructure that we're purchasing. And I'm, I'm, I, I don't know if that will be permissible because we're making one-fifth of the payment, as opposed to making a purchase outright. That's the, the part that, um, I have concerns with, until we get
But if it was permissible, Anna, wouldn't we be able to use A R P funds to pay off the entire thing and not just the, and not just the
Well, well, that's
And interest?
So that would be like taking, um, you know, one point eight million dollars that's been, you know, allocated, um, to the town to make a purchase on behalf of, you know, the Board of Education. And the issue there is that, um, when allocating those funds, I think that would be more of a process that we would follow, i.e. going, you know, the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance route. So, I mean, it, it may be, um, premature for the board to make a decision to allocate those funds at this point.
Thank you, Anna, that, that, that's why I asked the question, because it didn't quite seem that it was going to be a smooth, um, transaction. Okay, thank you.
Well, since we're still discussing a motion on the floor, you know, this kind of falls in line with what Rich suggested. If I take the low reduction in the budget of five hundred and eleven thousand and the high of six hundred and seventy-three, this kind of puts us right in the middle. So I, I'm willing to get behind Anne Santoro's motion on this.
Just one other comment is, we would be putting a hundred and sixty-two thousand against the three twenty-eight, which is approximately half the Board of Ed budgets, about two-thirds of our budget. So we're looking to cut deeper into the town, and we would be the Board of Ed. I'm just making that comment.
I'm not, not, that's not the way I really look at it. The way I really look at it is, you know, that three hundred is the additional that we need to find, of which only an additional one sixty is coming. from the Board of Ed. 160 in addition to the 431. Remember, we are voting on a reduction of the Board of Ed budget as it was presented to us, which does not include the, you know, the Board of Ed's, you know, recommendation to us that we could, you know, reduce the budget by that amount, because they have a different source of funds. So the motion, so we're reducing the Board of Ed budget by $593,000, which would bring their increase in the Board of Ed budget to below 2.95%. We know that the Board of Ed budget is going to increase by 2.95%, which is the ESER reduction. This will bring that down even a little bit more, which is less of an increase in their budget than the town side will be. The town side will still get north of 3% increase in their budget.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Are we ready to take a vote on this? Don't mean to rush it along, but, you know, it is what it is. Yes.
I was gonna say, I can get behind, what was it, 162,000? I, I would be probably in favor of that.
Any further discussion? I'll, I'll ask one more time. Okay, um, would you like to, uh, do we need to repeat Anne's motion, or should we just take the vote?
Say, take the vote.
Okay. All those in favor of Anne Santoro's motion to reduce the Board of Ed budget by $593,916, please raise your hand and say aye. Aye. Keep your hand up, so I can call off the names for Karen.
Just a mo-, just a moment, Camille. Should I re, would you want me to go back and redo the language of the motion? Because it, it was specific as to 162,000.
Well, I believe that Karen Zemetra probably has your motion written down.
Okay, so it'll be, it will be in the version of Karen Zemetra. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Right, not, not my version. I was just trying to summarize the number.
Camille, you had, you had 593,916?
Yes.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
So please raise your hand and say aye, and I will-
Aye.
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 Okay. The ayes have it, the motion carries 600. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Thank you for the motion, Anne. Appreciate it. Okay. So with that, let's move on to the town side of the budget. If we want to keep the mill rate to .17, we need, as Anne Chicallo pointed out, an additional reduction of 166,000. We don't need to make that much of a reduction. We can settle on a number and figure out what the mill rate increase would be based on this new number that we come up with. But again, that was just the suggestion that we would have to come up with if we want to keep the mill rate increased to .17. Yes, Rich Steele.
Do we also have the option, as we did last year, of using some of the undesignated fund balance?
Anna Johnson, Anna Johnson, please correct me if I'm wrong, but this is, uh, this is supposing that we're already pulling 900,000 out of the fund balance next year.
That's correct.
Oh, okay.
So if we wanted to reduce the fund balance to say 600,000, we either have to increase the mill rate or come up with additional reductions. Those are the choices. Or find a revenue opportunity. But I, I'm in favor of keeping the revenues, other than increasing the collection rate to 98.2. I'm really in favor of just keeping the revenue budget intact as it was presented to us. I don't really see anything that we can, um, I don't really see anything that we should be altering at this point, unless somebody else does.
I, I agree with you on that. I think it's just looking at that collection rate, you know, which we seem to already have a, a good handle on. And then, and the unassigned fund balance use, yeah.
Keep in mind, last year we pulled $900,000 out of the fund balance to fill a hole in the budget. We're still gonna be, um, we're not gonna be using all of that 900,000. It's just a protection measure. It's a protection measure that will keep the mill rate low. Now, when I think about what will happen in next year's budget cycle, I think about the revow that's going on right now. So this is a full uh revaluation that's going on on properties in our town. And I personally think that that is going to increase the grand list October 1st, 2021. All right, people made additions to their houses. Their assessed value will go up. We will get additional revenues, most likely as a result of the increase in the property valuations. So that is one way that we can raise revenues in the next budget cycle and, and not have a big jump in the mill rate increase next year. That's just my personal opinion. So I'm not, I mean, would I like to reduce the the transfer end of the fund balance from 900 to 600? Yes, I would, but not at the expense of cutting deeper into the general government budget. I, I, I don't think that we can find another 300 in addition to the 166 there. How does everybody else feel about that? Okay, no comment. So, um, let's get back to reviewing the numbers that we have. I had a recommended, and when we recommend a budget reduction for the, um, the general government side, we need to be specific about where those are going to come from. So I had the total of 125, and I'm gonna, and I'm going to round, 125,000. Anne Chicallo had a reduction of 250, and Santoro had a reduction of 35, and John Birmingham had a reduction of 50,000, and Rich Steele had a reduction of 129. So, keeping those figures in mind, let's go through budget by budget. We won't, we won't um, vote on it just yet. We will try to see if we have consensus in making that adjustment. And if we do, then those are the numbers that I will be tracking. Does that make sense? Okay. So let's start in the first selectman's office. I believe that we have probably consensus to eliminate the 25,501 from the first selectman's office. Would you say that that is correct?
I would agree with that, but I, I don't, I don't know what other people, what Peter in particular, thought about that. He had zero reduction, so you know, I'm not quite sure how that just plays out.
Okay, so myself, Anne Chicallo, Anne Santoro, Rich Steele, and John Birmingham all felt that we could reduce the first selectman's budget by 25,501. We did not, we weren't supporting that new position. So I think that pretty much represents a consensus on that line item.
Well, I get all voted, which, that's the consensus, yeah.
So again, we're not voting on it this, at this point. We're just trying to see if we can reach some kind of consensus before we make an actual recommendation. So, so that's one that I think that we're pretty, you know, pretty close on. From what I can see, no action was, no, that's not the word, action. No, no recommendations were made in the assessor's office. No recommendations were made in the tax collector's office or the building inspector. Uh, correct me if I'm wrong. Let's just repeat this. Um, I wanted to eliminate the hours for the building inspectors, the part-time building inspectors, because I wanted to rely on the salary contingency for that if we have another peak year. I, I'd like people to keep in mind that the salary contingency, which is Department 120, was actually increased significantly this year from $183,000 to, it looks like, 214,000. So we're increasing contingency fund already. I know Rich Steele had made a suggestion that maybe we increase contingency by 20,000 to account for eliminating that floater position. But it looks like we've already increased the contingency account, which is what we rely on when we have shortages in labor and some of these smaller departments.
So was that the 16,844, then?
Yes. Yes, because, yes. So, uh, I think that only Anne Chicallo and I were supporting eliminating that position, unless I missed somebody. So let's, let's go through. John Birmingham, did you want to keep that position?
Which one, now? Building inspector?
Yes.
25,000?
No, 16,844. It's, uh, it's 104-100-212.
Yeah, I, I, I will keep it.
Okay. Peter DeRosa, did you want to keep that?
Yes.
Okay, um, Rich Steele, did you want to keep that?
Well, you mentioned that funds are in contingency in case it spills over, like what we're gonna be voting on tomorrow night to have a transfer of funds from contingency.
Right.
And contingency's already been increased in this next budget.
Correct.
Okay, I-
So you could support that?
I, I could support that since it's there in contingency.
Okay, Anne Santoro, did I ask you?
Um, no.
Were you supporting that position, Anne Santoro?
Sure, thanks, Camille. Um, I, I was, but I'm, I'm willing to make some cut to it, like, bring it down, uh, you know, uh, you know, to some lesser number, uh, because we may be, just, you know, I think it's kind of a guesstimate as to the building permits and all that year coming up, so uh, I'm willing to rely both on reducing that number of 16,844 as the additional amount and then using contingency as necessary. So, you know, if that helps us, you know, along the way, yeah, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
So you mean, like, reduce this, say, to like 7,500? Just throw a number out there?
Yeah, I mean, or, you know, something, you know, maybe even in the 10, like $10,000 rather than the 16,000.
Whatever it takes to get us to closer to the 166?
Because I do think that there's a lot of movement there, you know, you know, and we have, we have some cushion because of contingency. And then we also have some cushion because, you know, um, we've, we've, you know, I think kind of, I'm not sure if we've underestimated those building permits, but I think there's still a bright spot there that we could get more. So I think we're, I think we're safe there, is what I'm trying to say.
So you would reduce it by 6,844 or reduce it by 10,000?
I, I would reduce it um by 6,844, just make it an even $10,000 of a, you know, something like that, to make it simple.
You would, you would reduce it by 6,844? Okay.
So you mean you'll, you'll reduce the proposed reduction of $16,844 by $6,844 to a $10,000 reduction?
That's, that's right, Anna.
I just wanted to be, make sure. I'm sorry.
Yeah, but you did it very well. Thank you.
Okay, uh, so we might be able to reach some consensus there. Peter D., did you have a thought on that?
No, I'd probably go along, you know, I mean, I, I would-
You'll take one for the team?
I'll take one for the team, yeah.
All right, let's, let's move on.
My goal was not to be an obstacle.
Okay. Uh, for the town engineer, I had no recommendations. Is that correct? Okay, moving on. For the town clerk, I had one person indicate that they would like to increase the budget by $15,000. Now, that was Rich Steele, I believe.
Yeah, Camille, in, in light of us trying to reach a goal, you can disregard that suggestion, okay?
And you would be perfectly okay if the town clerk needs additional assistance to tap into the salary contingency account? Or to perhaps get a loner resource from a different department?
If I, if I may, I will point out that, um, within the budget, the town clerk does have a line item for part-time support, which is $2,400. So in the event that um, more assistance is needed, since there is that line item within the budget, we could very easily do a transfer from contingency, just, just so that the board understands. Okay.
Perfect. Thank you. That, that clarifies for me, and disregard my previous suggestions, please.
Okay, all right. Uh, Ledge Light Health, no recommended changes. Information Technology, no recommended changes.
I thought somebody had mentioned that, though. Anne Santoro, didn't you talk about information technology, or was that something else?
I think that was more, Anne, I think that was more with, um, uh, capital, uh-
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I just remembered it, that's all.
Yes, but you're right. It, it stems from that department, right?
Okay.
Okay, moving on to registrars. Not sure I caught everybody. It was, um, myself Anne Santoro and John Birmingham, I believe, who wanted to reinstate the registrar's request. Is that correct?
Yes.
Do we still feel that conviction? I know I do. Anne Santoro does.
Camille, I can support that.
It looks like we can all probably support that reinstatement. Okay.
How much, how much is that adding back, exactly? Thank you.
It looks like there was no change to the probate court. It looks like there was no recommended changes to building maintenance. Uh, let's skip general government benefits. That's going to be dependent upon some of these other positions that may or may not still be with us. Uh, no changes to community services. I'm just gonna run through the list, and if there's something different that somebody said, please just stop me. You're allowed to interrupt, for sure. Okay. Um, I had made a recommendation that we should eliminate the $500 stipend or payment for Zoom meetings and zoning planning and wetlands, since we'll be going back to live meetings. Is there any support for that?
I'll support that.
I'll support that. So that's $500?
Yeah.
I will as well. I will as well.
Okay, so it looks like we have consensus on that, but I better just plug that in here. So it was Ann C., Rich, and Peter?
Uh, Camille, I'll support that as well. I mean, I, I see the, the sort of physical need, you know, for someone to help with all the charts and graphs and information, but you know, again, that's another contingency possibility.
Right. Can I have some help to run this Zoom meeting too? Can we have 500 back for Board of Finance? Boy, would I love that.
You've done such a great job. You've talked yourself out of it.
Hey, one of, one of you folks on this very screen is going to be doing this job next year.
I could have used some help when I tried to do it. No one told me there was a town account. Yeah.
All right, just bear with me while I make these changes. Um, and I have to make it, and then wetlands also. Okay. But we have consensus there. Okay. No recommended changes to the finance department. Contingency, again, there was that $20,000 that Rich Steele had recommended to add back in. That comes out. Because we already have an increased contingency fund for that.
Correct.
Um, Anna, Board of Assessment Appeals. This, this is going to be a wash, but I think it's a pretty important motion that I would like to make this evening. I would like to break out in the Board of Assessment Appeals. Um, the part-time recording secretary wages from the Board of Assessment Appeal member stipends. So that number is $6,780 coming out of Department 412 and going into a new department. So it's a wash on the budget. We're just separating it so that it's, there's more transparency in the budget as to what that salary is. So I don't know if the rest of you folks followed that, but I'll be making that motion this evening. Again, it's a wash in the Board of Assessment Appeal. Um. Inland Wetlands Agency, so we're all on board with eliminating the $500 stipend for the Zoom meeting person. But it looks like a couple, I was actually supporting the inland wetlands part-time officer this year. I know that the department head has come before us for the past eight or nine years, as long as I've been on this board, he's been coming to us asking for help and he's always been denied. I also know that he had requested, the, the department head had requested a $50,000 expense line item this year, uh, which isn't really transparent in the budget detail that we have. But it's my understanding that that was cut down to 25,000 by the Board of Selectmen. So the original request was 50, it was reduced to 25. We have two people, and I was supporting the 25 this year, uh, but we have two people, um, that are saying they want to eliminate that and two people that are saying, uh, let's eliminate $10,000 of that budget and just try to go with maybe 15. 10 or 15 or whatever. So.
I could get behind a limit, like, cutting it down. If that will bring us to agreement.
Um, okay, uh, so, so Ann, you were a 25, right? That went to a 10, that you're willing to go to a 10. The other $25,000 reduction was John Birmingham. Uh, do, how do you feel, John? Do you still want to eliminate that altogether? Are you willing to just cut 10 out?
I'd like to stay with the 25,000, but if it's gonna, if everybody else wants to reduce it to 15 and whatever, I'll go along with it.
So I'd really like to stay with the no reduction to that. I'd like to give him the 25, but if it means just trying to reach some kind of consensus and getting closer to our 166 budget. I'm not tracking it that way, so I don't know yet. I don't know if Anna Johnson's tracking it that way.
About 40,000, right now. So right now, um, um, you've come to a consensus on $33,878 in reductions.
So I, I'm willing to reduce that too. I'm willing to revise my opinion on that. So I think that maybe we'll be able to reach some sort of consensus there. I will just put in, um, reduce it by 10 or 15?
10.
10.
10.
Reduce it by 10 so that the inland wetlands officer still has 15 to work with.
Yeah.
That's what I'm hearing. Okay. Reduce it by 10. All right. Then, water and shellfish. No suggestions. Brookside Farm, Town Building Committee, Harbor Management, Conservation of Natural Resources, Historic Properties, Emergency Management and Public, well, let me stop at Emergency Management.
Oh, um, excuse me, Camille?
Yeah.
There was something on the table in, um, Department 134 to make a reduction to the curator account.
You're right, $3,090. Um, I can get behind that. I think Ann Santoro made that recommendation. Yeah, I can get behind that. Rich Steele can get behind that. Uh, who, who else said they could get behind? Ann Chikalo, okay?
Yeah, I can.
Yeah, okay.
Pretty much we all can, it sounds like. Or what, we have enough people to, all right. All right, so Town Building, Harbor Management, Conservation of Natural Resources, and Historic Properties Commission, all no recommendations. Um, Emergency Management, Department 214, I didn't hear any recommendations for that department. Okay. Uh, Public Safety Dispatch, I didn't hear any recommendations for that department. Um, I'm going to skip over the police now and save that for last. I didn't hear anything for the Niantic or Flanders Fire Departments. I didn't hear anything for Public Safety Fire Marshal or Animal Control. I didn't hear anything for Public Works. Is that correct?
Camille?
Yes.
I did have, um, something for the traffic calming measures. I proposed adding 10,000.
Notice like conveniently.
Sorry about that.
Skip over that.
But if nobody wants one set, that's fine. I was just thinking because the police have said that traffic is a major issue in town. I thought that might help.
Okay. So, yes, I see that here. I did, $10,000 adding to Public Works from Rich. All right.
But if nobody else wants it, that, that's fine too.
I probably won't get behind that at this point. What about anybody else? Anybody else can get behind that?
I think it's related to the police discussion.
I thi, I think it is too. Honestly, it is. I mean, we might not have a choice. But to leave it out. All right. Anna, what is the number that you have so far?
Um, $46,968.
All right, I'm missing something. I had 44,501.
So I'll just read down what I have. Um, uh, Selectmen minus 25,501, Building Official minus 10,000, Registrars increased 2,623, Department 1-
Oh, hang on, hang on, hang on. Did you say Building Official 10,000?
Yes.
I think it's 16,844.
No, the building, this, the building was 6,844.
No, remember the discussion? Um, I confirmed with, um, it was Ann Sant, yes, Ann Santoro's motion. And so the original motion was to make a reduction for $16,844. She wanted to reduce that reduction by $6,844 to a $10,000 reduction.
Right, but there's three of us that are still behind the 16,844.
Okay. All right, so I was, you know, I was trying to, okay.
Oh, I-
I see what you're saying. I mean, so like, I was just kind of like trying to clarify it, um, to get, you know, to a point because I thought you were looking to have everybody in agreement, and that was my understanding of the session. So.
Did, did anybody else agree to, like, with Ann about?
I think I did. Yeah, I agree.
You did?
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
So is that our difference, Camille?
Yeah.
So that number, so that number is reduced by what number then?
10,000.
Thank you. Yeah, that's the difference.
Increased by 2,623, and Departments 116 and 132, a $500 reduction to each of their part-time clerical accounts. Um, Department 132, a $10,000 reduction for the new GIS planner position. Department 134, a reduction of $3,090 to the curator.
Well, just getting back to the building one more time, are we reducing it 6844 and leaving 10,000 in there? Or are we reducing it 10,000 and leaving 6844? Which, what are we leaving in?
The, um, the 6,844.
So it is-
So you are- Dollar reduction.
I'm sorry, so making a $10,000 reduction?
Correct.
Now, I had also talked about in the building, Department 314, the overtime account went up 100% from 1,500 to 3,000. I talked about how no charges have been made against that account yet. And we're in the ninth month of this 12-month fiscal year. So I was thinking that we could keep that budget flat at 1,500. That's account 104, 11314. Can we get some maybe consensus on that to keep it flat?
Is that a reduction of what then?
1,500. I got Rich.
Yeah, I'll, I'll go with that.
I'll go with it.
Yeah.
So for the total for building then, Anna, you should have 11,5 reduction?
Yes.
Okay. So, so far, what we have, oh, you know what the difference was too, Anna? I have some numbers in my spreadsheet for, um, uh, general government benefits, just based on my calculations, but that's, that's going to be wrong. Like I had a $13,000 reduction in FICA, but we, we don't know that yet because we haven't finished with the police. All right. So if I take that out, my total deductions that we have so far are 42,788. Is that what you have?
No, I have 48,468.
I'm sorry, 48?
468.
468. So what's that difference? What am I missing?
And what do you have, Camille?
42,788. It's a difference of 56,80. All right, let's do this one more time. First Selectmen, 25,501. Building, 11,500. Registrars were adding back 2623. Zoning were eliminating 500. Tell me if I'm going too fast, Anna. Planning, we're eliminating 500. Inland Wetlands were eliminating 10,500.
Thought it was 10,000 I had down.
And then Wetlands remembered the chair, I mean, not the chair, the, uh, the Zoom, the Zoom.
Okay, got it, got it.
For 500. So that's 10,500.
Camille, I have not recorded a $500 reduction to the planning department. And, um, the request for the part-time recording secretary, there is no increase in that department. In this year's budget, it's a $2,000 line item, and in next year's budget, it's a $2,000 line item.
And planning, 117?
Correct.
Let me double check. So. So. We're not getting somebody to conduct the Zoom meetings for planning?
You know what, I don't, I- Well, I, when I look at the narrative, it talks about doing that. Um, however, as I said, it's a $2,000 budget this year and, um, the request is for 2,000 extra. So I'm just pointing, I'm just pointing that out to you. Um, I have been told that, um, there is someone that has been conducting the Zoom meetings for the department and, you know, that's, that's all I can, um.
But then I think it's safe to reduce that $2,000 budget to 1,500, to take 500 out of that. Right? I mean, there's- Let's plug the 500 in for now. We can revisit. Yes, Ann Santoro? Uh, you're muted, Ann.
I'm muted. Thank you. Thanks. Um, I think that's actually in the zoning budget of 116.
It's there, it's there as well. It's in zoning, planning, and inland wetlands, but in the, in the narrative, it talks about-
Right. And it's actually in the numbers, uh, if you look at Department 116 zoning for 100-412, but that number does go up by $500 there.
Zoning, yes.
Yes. Right.
So what are you saying? That you think it's a mistake in the narrative?
All I'm saying is it does appear somewhere. It doesn't appear in planning because is this person roving between the departments? So to speak. So it has to appear in at least one of the departments. Is that the idea?
No, there's somebody that runs the Zoom meetings for planning, zoning, and inland wetlands. All right? These are evening meetings where the chair of those departments are not running their own Zoom meetings.
Yes, I understand.
So that's in the narrative of all of those departments. So
Right, but I'm just-
Whether the budget was increased or not, I don't think it's really an issue, right? It's included in that figure. It's probably $500 to run those meetings. So I, I thought we could reduce it if, if, you know, it's 500 bucks. If you want to leave it alone.
No, I, I, I'm fine with moving it out. I just couldn't locate where that $500 increase happened because it wasn't, as Anna said, in planning, you know, but it looks like-
I'm just assuming it was the same as the other two departments.
I'm wondering if it was just a, a copy and paste of, because it seems like that wording's the same between the two. I'm wondering if it was just a, a copy and paste of, because it seems like that wording's the same between the two departments. So I'm wondering if the, the narrative is mistaken because the budget didn't change in the planning department.
But a- as Camille had said, and, and I, I wasn't meaning they were in the office, I'm sorry, I misspoke, but I understand that they are running the Zoom meetings. But it, it's one person running those meetings for the three departments, is what you're saying, Camille?
Oh, I, I have no idea who's running all these Zoom meetings. I just know that I run our Zoom meeting, right? And I'm free. So I'm, I'm having a little trouble understanding why other boards and commissions can't run their own Zoom meetings. That's all I'm saying. But I have no, I have no, I have no idea who's doing what.
Yeah. I think Anna just wanted to locate the budget, the department from which the five hundred would be plucked. You know, because it doesn't appear in the planning one. Is that correct?
I think if, if it's flat funded, I, I don't think we should be taking money away, and we're not sure.
Mm-hmm.
There, you know, if it's flat funded, if they increased it by five hundred, I think that's one thing, but I think Rich has a point that, um, if it's flat funded, I mean, we're talking five hundred dollars, we're not talking salary positions here.
Yeah, the only places that I see the increase are the inland wetlands and for the zoning, the, the planning, there isn't an increase in their line item.
Okay, what, can somebody check the, um, year-to-date, well, it's five hundred bucks, let's just leave it out for now. I was gonna say, we can always check to see what the expenditure is against the two thousand dollars year-to-date. Because maybe it's only a thousand dollars with three months to go. Who knows? But I'll take it out for now. So, um, it's only five hundred dollars. Okay, so moving along then, in the inland wetlands agency, Anna, ten thousand five hundred. Brookside Farm, three thousand ninety. And that's how I get the forty-two, two eighty-eight now. So. What's your number?
So I have all the same numbers as you do, and my total is forty-eight thousand four hundred sixty-eight dollars.
All right, maybe I'm just missing, let me check my formula. I, I could be missing off something. Let me check my formula. Second one, two. I don't know, my formula looks fine. I don't know what's going on. Check the negative versus the positive. Oh, okay, I know what it is. Brookside Farm is a reduction of three thousand ninety. I had it as an addition. That's what it is. Forty-eight, four sixty-eight. Okay, we tie. Now let's have that discussion on the police department, two sixteen. We have some people that want to see zero police officers added, and we have some people that want to, uh, approve both officers this year. I think we all spoke pretty thoroughly about this subject, um. Two peo- so here's where we stand. Two people want to support both officers being hi- hired. Two, two people want to support no officers being hired. And I myself said that I would be able to support one this year. While we do, um, some further investigation of this, I guess, or, I, I don't know, I don't know what the word, I don't know what the word is. You know, maybe, uh, what I heard loud and clear is that we would like more community input with regard to this study that was done. And I also heard that, you know, the, the unknown of the Police Accountability Act and how much that's unfunded mandates are going to be coming down the road to, to, you know, fund that. I also heard, let's redirect the budget towards more training rather than more hiring. You know, that's the reason for reducing. Um, and on the plus side, what I, what I strongly heard was that it's unrelated to crime. You know, that's not why they need to s- increase the number of, um, shifts that, you know, that they want to increase the shifts be- so that there's less interruptions in, in the calls that they're handling. That there was a seven percent increase year over year in the number of calls that they received, that we are ranked, you know, one of the lowest municipalities in terms of officers per one thousand capita. So, I don't know, maybe I missed something, but I think I kinda gave you the pros and the cons. Has anybody changed their position on this? Is anybody willing to compromise? Rich Steele, let's hear from you.
Camille, I, I think you mentioned two were in favor of, of two officers. I believe it was three because Peter, John, and Anne were in favor of both of the officers. I, I could compromise with one, and also a- again noting that one officer is noted as an SRO that perhaps that could be used as the second officer if they change their line, if they change their assignments, but I could compromise and, and add one officer.
Tha- thank you, Rich, for correcting me. You're absolutely right. Um, I forgot Peter DeRosa said that he would support the government side of the budget as proposed. So we have three people supporting two. Two people supporting zero, myself supporting one. And so far, we have somebody willing to compromise in the middle, as we've compromised this entire evening. Has anybody else changed their position?
At this point, I can't. I'm still sticking with two.
Okay.
I think the, the total responsibility to the, uh, police department warrants the addition of two. I think one would be okay, but not enough. I'm just, I'm sorry, I just think two is needed.
There's no need to apologize, John. That's your belief, and you are entitled to your, your belief. I mean, that, that's all there is to it. I think, I think you're advocating very well, uh, to do the best that you can for our town, and look, that's all anybody can expect of us, right? It just happens that we have some differing opinions and.
I know, I can, I, I, I accept that, you know.
All right, so Anne, uh, you're probably not, Anne Santoro, I'm thinking you're pretty much not changing your position.
Yeah, I, I, you know, um, just to be brief about it, yeah, I, I, I feel very strongly about it. And like I said, for me, it was an evolutionary thing, you know, from the one to the two, as I got more into the information. And, and when I asked that, that question, which I guess I head forward it to all of you, uh, Chief Response, you've all gotten that. Um, you know, on, on the operational necessity, and I, I felt he made a very, a clear case on that. And I, I didn't want to get distracted with all other issues. I, you know, I felt strongly that he was making that case, has made the case. Um, and of course, things like crime statistics and, and growth in community and population, all that adds to the pot, but.
Okay.
I had an operation, like, and a little, little view of that when I was in Vision Committee as well, because looking physically at the building and, and how things had to be structured, and the grand detail, and the responsibility level, it's so heavy-duty.
Um, okay, no, I, yeah, okay, go ahead.
My, my last point is, I, I would like, I'm not thinking six-year plan, that's not in my head. My head is now, and, and making up for some of the past. Um, and then we, we really do, as a town, need to look at, at, um, you know, year one of that accountability and how that, as Peter mentioned, how does that play out as, as it becomes in effect? And we do all this, all this stuff, but, so that, that'll look differently, but I, I'm, you know, I'm not looking that far down the road. Thanks.
Okay. So here's what we have so far. Forty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-eight in recommended reductions, which, if we want to get to our target of a point one seven mil rate increase, we need to come up with an additional five thirty, five hundred and thirty-two thousand. If we do not, then we look at increasing the mil rate. So that, that's the choice that we have. Bearing in mind, we're still pull- pulling nine hundred thousand from the fund balance to cover this operating budget, so.
Wait. Camille?
Yes.
Can I interrupt for one second?
Yeah.
I apologize. So I thought we had to get a hundred and sixty-six thousand, right? Was that it?
Yeah.
To get to the number, so you're saying we had, we're at forty-two, seven, eighty-eight?
I'm sorry, scratch that number. That was my number, and that was wrong. We're at forty-eight thousand four sixty-eight.
And we need how much more then?
I'd leave one hundred. One seventeen, five thirty-two.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I thought you said five hundred thousand, that's why I, I was like.
That's what I heard as well.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you said, no, that's why I just kind of like, wait a minute, I didn't know where that nu- number came from. Okay, no worries.
I don't know.
I don't know, it's okay.
We're at forty-eight, four sixty-eight, so the choice is, um, well, let me, let me first say that I think we have three people in favor of supporting the police department, as it was, you know, the, the two additional officers. That's not enough to reach a majority, it's probably not going to pass. So, are you willing, you know, we could go around, it's, it's just not enough to pass. So, we can make, we can make the motion, and it will probably fail, or we can try, you know, to come to some other kind of agreement, whether it's hiring just one. I mean, I, I, I've said I'm willing to go to one. I think, did I hear somebody else say they're willing to go to one? One of the people that said zero?
Rich.
So Rich is willing to go to one. Anna, are you willing to go to one? Anne Chacello?
I prefer not to. Um, if other people go to one,
Well, so here's.
There'll be, then there would just be a majority, and that would be one, but, yeah, I, I'm at zero right now.
We might not even get there if, if we can't get Anne Santoro, John Birmingham, or, um, Peter DeRosa to, to agree to one, we might not even get there. Yes, John?
Let me throw this out. Sup- suppose we approve one now, and then we add one in January.
How about this? Suppose we add none, and we use ARP funds to fund these two officers to, you know, it, cut it out of the operating budget if it's really deemed that critical to hire this year, take it out of ARP funds to fund these two positions for one year.
Oh, Camille, if I may, I, I, I do believe, um, in documentation that I've read, I don't, I don't think it's permissible to use it for operating items.
So, for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue due to the pandemic, that's one of the conditions. So this is a government service. I think we could easily make an argument that the seven percent increase in calls last year were probably related to COVID and the pandemic. I mean, the increases have been up all over the country because of the pandemic. So, you know, perhaps, you know, that is something that we would need legal advice on. Um, I'm not really sure how the Board of Education were able to figure that out so quickly. They did, they probably went to their attorney, you know, as soon as they knew, they were getting the funds and figured out how they could use it.
They were given guidance, and the guidance on, you know, the funds that are coming to the town side, we're still waiting for information from the Department of Treasury. It is thought that they're going to take just about the sixty-day window, meaning between the time that, um, um, the president signed the executive order, which I believe was on March eleventh, to distribute the funds. So, you know, until we get that specific guidance, we're unsure exactly as to how we're going to be able to expend the funds. With that said, um, the Board of Selectmen has been hearing, um, different department requests and some other agencies, um, from within the town. They've been going to the Board of Selectmen me- meetings and making their cases for, um, you know, a, a portion of the funds be allocated to them, if you will. So, in order, if, we, yes, we are receiving the funds, I, I, I just, just trying to point out that there's going to be a process related to how the funds get allocated.
Mm-hmm.
Camille, i- i- if I could, um.
Yes.
Um, also add that, um, and I've mentioned this, I think, this evening briefly, but on the ed- under this act, under the American Rescue Plan Act, um, the education allocations, um, that section of the law is very specific. Um, you know, even with mentioning HVAC systems and windows and everything. Um, unlike the side of the, uh, that, that portion rather of the act which delineates, and you're, you are apparently familiar with that, those four categories that you see that are kind of general. And that's why I think Treasury is going through this gymnastics of now having to do regulations. And when an agency does regulations, that takes time. They gotta promulgate the regulations, they gotta get approval, et cetera, et cetera. But, um, the only thing I can say, and I, I agree that it's kind of tricky with something operational, but that's what brought me to subsection D in that statu- in that section, which is to make necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. So that's why I looked at the capital, because I looked at the capital because it isn't operational, and I looked at the capital because to me, if I could get it within the concept of broadband infrastructure, which is very vast, it's computers, it's Wi-Fi, it's this, it's that, um, that would be helpful. That's why I did try, you know, my suggestion for that, uh, payment. Uh, or certainly the computers and servers that we have to buy, if, if that's fifteen thousand dollars, though. But the, uh, the other, uh, would be the hundred, a hundred thousand dollars, that would be a hundred thousand. My, my, my last point on that is, and I realize we don't have the regulations, but at least it's within that category that was cut, you know, that was described in the statute. And then I thought it was of such an amount that we could handle it if we, if we, you know, didn't meet all the criteria, like it wasn't a bazillion dollars, so. So that's why I felt there was some latitude, and I also just generally felt really bad that we weren't beginning to use the ARP money. You know, uh, knowing that it's coming in June, and this is the budget coming up here, so.
Okay.
I was hoping.
Yeah, so we're just throwing out ideas because I think that we're going to reach an impasse, and I, I'm just trying to look for, you know, different solutions to try to get beyond this impasse. Is anybody else, yes, Peter?
What, um, I, I, I can't do the calculations right now. Um, the difference in mil rate, it, w- w- the impasse is one, one additional police officer versus two additional police officers. What, what would the mil rate difference be with that, if, um, if, if we're.
One.
Yeah, well, if we, yeah, the, the difference between one and two. That's my first question. And then my second question is, um, is Chief Finkelstein allowed to comment on John Birmingham's comment about delaying the hiring of one in an effort to reduce the overall cost? What, what, what the impact of that would be?
Anne Chacello's shaking her head now, I mean. I mean, all questions should have been posed, you know, prior. I mean, we need to make decisions.
All right, I'm just, you know, because that, that was a way to save money and still achieve the goal.
Well, this, I'm not sure what the, I'm, I'm not sure, you know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure how that would help the situation, because I think, you know, if it was my budget, I would say, well, that's better than, you know, one and a half is better than one, you know? Not sure that's really going to solve anything. Two is better than one and a half. So we need to, we need to decide. We need to figure, we need to figure this out. So maybe Anna Johnson can answer the question about what is the difference in mil rate if we hire one versus two? Um, and Ann Chakello just getting, you know, getting back to my, perhaps, I don't know if you could call it a plea to maybe think about one. I'm not even sure that's going to matter because I don't know if one is going to pass tonight, but I guess, um, my plea for that would be based on your desire to also keep the mill rate low. So, um, what would you prefer, raising the mill rate if we, um, go with one or keeping the mill rate low to go with zero? You, you understand my question? I guess.
Not really, but that's okay.
Well, if we don't, well, okay, so if we don't, if we, if we can't get to, if we can't get to one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars, we're, we're forced with looking at a mill rate increase of more than point one-seven. So I guess what I'm asking is that if we, if we can't get there, it's going to increase the mill rate. What, what is more important to you at this point? Keeping the mill rate low?
The thing is, what would it be if it's just one? That's what A- Anna's.
I think Anna's worked her magic now.
Okay, so if, if you look at the, the salary, the payroll taxes, the uniform allowance and, um, health insurance, one officer would cost one hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred thirty-seven dollars. And two officers would cost three hundred seven thousand five hundred ninety-nine dollars. And the reason why there's, um, you know, like, uh, it's not just double the one, you know, like, the, the one thirty-nine is because when working on the budget, we included, um, a new officer at the starting salary and we, we included a new officer at a lateral salary, which would have been a step three on the, on the ladder. Um, which a lateral would be someone comes to us from another department and they already have the training through the academy. So we typically start them on step three. And then, um, the other, um, yeah, so that's really where, where the, the difference in salary is. And then for health insurance, I made the assumption that, um, we would hire someone on a two-person plan and not a full family plan. So, um, but in any event, that's why there's the little disparity in the, um, in.
So, so in round numbers, every additional police officer will cost the town an additional one hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year?
Approximately that, yes.
So I guess in, even though I said I was going to resist this, I would, I will go to one if we can get it done for one. Um, that, then, and, you know, um, also taking into account, there were two officers that have been out and that are coming back from like medical leave. And then in addition, you have hopefully the officer, the SRO officer that will be coming on. So there will be some other officers. But in, in the spirit of trying to come to some agreement, I, I will go to one.
And, and that, that was why I went to one. I, I, with you that my preference would be zero. And I understand we have colleagues that their preference is two, but.
Yeah.
Fifty thousand a pop and trying to, to maintain the mill rate that we want to achieve.
Yeah.
In the spirit of compromise, that's why.
Exactly.
Support one.
So, so far we've got two individuals on the Board of Finance that are willing to compromise their position in the spirit of compromise and we, and we have three that are totally unwilling to budge on this. So. So we're nowhere. So we're, unless, unless Peter DeRosa and Santoro or John Birmingham can, can reach a compromise and just go with, bearing in mind, we've added one officer over the past two years. You know, we could take the slow and steady approach and address a number of concerns that were raised during delegations, right, public delegations, um.
Well, after all is said and done, if it's going to fail because, say, I won't compromise, I'll compromise and go to one.
That's the spirit, John.
I don't like it, but I don't want it to fail either.
I, I think, wow, the only one that's happy in this situation is me because I'm the one that said, I'm good with one. And I realize that the rest of you are very unhappy and I feel badly about that. I do. I, I, but I don't know what else to do at this point. We've got to get a budget passed, you know, um.
Well, that, that's how negotiations are though. I mean, that's just the, the, that's negotiations. So. So, um, you know, everybody has definite opinions.
So do we need to have a motion and take a vote on this?
No, I think, I think, I think the, the whole thing of it is that I think that if we were to make a motion to increase the police staff by one, we could get something passed tonight. So I think we need to work on the numbers and then make a motion based on the final numbers. If it's determined that we've cut a little bit deeper than one sixty-six by eliminating this one police officer, then that just bodes well for us because we can reduce the amount that we, we're going to pull from the, um, fund balance, right? So just in round numbers, if we're already at forty-eight, four sixty-eight and we take out another one fifty, we're at one ninety-eight, four sixty-eight. We only needed one sixty-six. So we're not going to lower the mill rate because we're cutting more. What we're going to do is take less money out of the fund balance. Instead of nine hundred thousand, maybe we'll take eight hundred and seventy thousand. You follow me?
Why?
Yes, yes, Anne Santoro.
Why, why wouldn't you, oh, sorry.
Thank you. Thanks, um, Camille. I did have a question, just going back a couple of steps. When Peter had asked about the mill rate difference and Anna had given us the, the difference in, uh, salary plus benefits uh, and other needs. Um, so do we have a mill rate attached to either of those things, Anna? Like the difference between one officer and two and the incremental change or whatever it is in the mill rate? Thank you.
So if, if we, um, reduce the, um, starting salary off, officer, that would be a one hundred forty-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollar reduction.
Anna, my question was about the mill rate and how those sums would impact a mill rate. Could you give a ballpark of, of what that is? I think that was Peter's question. Do I have that correct, Peter?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so. So it would, it would impact the, um, the mill rate by point oh-six mills. Somewhere in that vicinity, using the ninety-eight point two percent collection rate.
Yes, Ann Chakello.
So just a quick question. If there's a reduction of one ninety-eight, four sixty-eight, why wouldn't we then in turn try to reduce the mill rate? Why would we put money back in the unassigned fund balance?
You know, that's, that's a good question. That's a good, that's a good valid question and, and we could do that. We could, you know, I, I guess I didn't really phrase that properly.
To do.
Yeah, that, that would be another decision for the board to come to, you know, what their preference would be there. But I think early on, a lot of people were kind of, um, reaching consensus that nine hundred thousand dollars was a lot to pull from the fund balance. And if we could reduce that, that it would be prudent to do so. But no, we absolutely could reduce the point one-seven increase lower if that's what the board thinks the prudent thing to do.
I mean, that would just help the, the taxpayer. I mean, it's.
I, I would be in favor of.
Which I think in.
Uh, of decreasing the, the mill rate. And the nine hundred thousand, we made that decision last year, right? So that it's not like we're pulling an additional nine hundred thousand out this year.
Yes, it would be. For every year that you budget nine hundred thousand dollars, you're taking nine hundred thousand dollars from the unassigned fund balance.
And if we use it. And if we don't, it gets returned. So for the current fiscal year that we're in, based on the latest financials that Anna sent to us early, earlier this evening, it looks like we would be returning how much to the general fund out of the nine hundred?
Three hundred and seventy thousand.
Three hundred and seventy. So yes.
You know, that's, that's an, like, that's an estimate as of today, you know, and that's subject to change daily.
Right, because, because we have, um, two more months to go in the fiscal year. So there could be more changes coming down the pike. Yeah.
Okay, so let me, so if we reduce one police officer, that would be, um, a sixty thousand four hundred forty-five dollar salary reduction, thirty-eight hundred dollars to uniforms, um, eighty-one.
Yeah, um, Anna, can you go a little slower? Because I'd like to, I'd like to follow with you.
Okay, so from.
If you could give me the department numbers, please.
Okay, so police two sixteen.
Yeah, the salary for five eleven.
Would be a sixty thousand four hundred forty-five dollar reduction.
Or forty-five?
Yes.
Okay.
Thirty-eight hundred dollar uniform reduction. Um, and then the next department would be.
Oh, hold on, what about eight hundred dollars for the gun? I think there were, there were two guns in the budget for two police officers.
Okay, I did not include the, the, um, the fire, the fire weapon.
Okay, eight hundred. So the total police department budget reduction would be sixty-five thousand forty-five dollars.
Yeah, I, I was just trying to find the, um, the budget account for the weapon and I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I have that. Do you need it or did you find it?
Oh, no, if you have it, I would.
Two, two sixteen, three hundred, three two six. I, I think it was in the, um.
Training supplies.
I'm sorry, what?
It's the training supplies account.
Yeah. So the narrative spells that out. So on page, uh.
You couldn't hear anything.
Oh, sorry. Page five of six of the write-up in the police department under training supplies, the very last sentence says, includes sixteen hundred dollars for handguns for two additional officers.
No, I'm good, thank you. I just, the way I do the worksheet, I, I, I list what the proposed budget was, so I wanted that number.
Yeah. Oh, I, I have the, I have some of the numbers here, Anna, too, so.
Okay, and then.
So sixty-five thousand forty-five dollars for the police, for department two sixteen.
Sixty, sixty-five thousand, um, forty-five dollars. Okay. All right. And then, um, I made in department one fourteen, um, the payroll tax account.
Right.
I, I went and I looked at all of the salary reductions you've made. So the reduction will be six thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars.
Six thousand three hundred eighty-one?
Yes.
So that was for, just to recap, one police officer, one floater position for twenty-five. The building was reduced to eight, three, four, four? No, 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 sorry about that. Never mind. All right, the building and then the zoning planning. And then you added back that registrars?
Yep.
You made, okay.
So wait a minute, it's going to be more, um, my, I wasn't scrolled up. I missed the, um, the floater.
Yeah, I had a number closer to thirteen thousand, but that might be too high.
Yeah, it's actually eight thousand three hundred thirty-two dollars.
Eight thousand three hundred thirty-two. All right. So that's one fourteen dash one hundred dash one twenty-one, FICA?
Right. And then, um, the health insurance account, which is account one twenty-seven, eighty-one thousand sixty-eight dollars.
Health insurance. I'm sorry. Oh, what was that number again?
Eighty-one thousand sixty-eight dollars.
I meant the department. The account number, I meant.
One twenty-seven.
One twenty-seven. And how much is that?
Eighty-one thousand sixty-eight dollars.
Eighty-one oh-six-eight?
Yes.
Okay.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Let me think about that. Um, bear with me.
I, I think it's only for one position, health and dental, right? Because that, there's only one full-time.
Right, but, um, I, I just, I, um, oops. Yeah, okay, um, it's correct. Okay, I'm, I'm good. I'm, I'm sorry. I just, I guess it's late.
We're so close to being done.
Okay. So I saw the total of two hundred, two thousand nine hundred, nine hundred thirteen.
Two hundred and two thousand nine hundred and thirteen. I have the same amount.
Okay.
So what we could do. is we could make a motion to adjust the general government budget downward by 202,913 pursuant to the changes that have been outlined in this evening's meeting. Because we have the detail, we know exactly where the cuts will be coming from. We could get a second and then we could take a vote on it if, if we're ready. Yes, Ann Chakel.
Can I make a motion? Sorry. Okay. I'll make a motion to reduce the general government budget by 202,913 as set forth in the changes outlined in this evening's meeting of February, of April 21st, 2021, by the Board of Finance.
That works for me, I'll, I'll second that. There any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, I think we can call for a vote. Are we ready to vote, people? Okay, all those in favor of Ann Chakel's motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Me, you need a second. Did someone? I, I seconded it myself.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
No, that's okay. So please raise your hand and keep, keep your hand raised if you approve this. Okay, for approval, we have Richard Steele, John Birmingham, Ann Chakel, Peter DeRosa, and Camille Alberti. All those opposed, raise your hand.
Aye.
So we have Ann, Ann Santoro with a nay. So the motion carries 5, 1, 0. Thank you, everyone. Um, really appreciate, really, really appreciate the compromise.
Anna, can I get a sheet from you on that?
Is it? Is there, is there a, um, a discussion as to the reduction of the mill rate versus by that amount?
I was just going to add.
Sorry, hard to hear.
Yeah, I know Karen can, Karen, she muted, all right, she muted herself. Anna, would we do, would we do that when we go to sit, or we really have to do that now? I think we have to, we have to make a motion on the revenues if we want to adjust that tonight, correct? We cannot wait until we set the mill rate to, to go back and readjust the revenue. So yes, now that I'm talking myself through this at this late hour, we would have to motion to do that. So if Anna's probably very busy calculating what the mill rate would be, including the $900,000 revenue source from the fund and including the 202,913 dollar reduction that we approved tonight.
So at this point, because you've made the reduction to the Board of Education side and then, you know, the reduction on the town side, the budget is now, um, you know, we made a reduction to the budget of $796,829. So we either, you know, we can, we, you know, adjust the, the tax levy by that amount or do a combination of what we'll collect in taxes and the unassigned fund balance. So it's really up to the board.
Right, so in order to make that decision, can you give us an estimate of what the mill rate would be if we leave the revenue side of the budget intact?
intact that the increase that we agreed on or intact of last year?
I'm sorry, what was that question, Peter? I didn't understand the question, Peter.
What's, what's the revenue rate that we're calculating that?
I'm looking for the mill rate increase if we still pull out $900,000 from the fund balance into our revenue stream.
Okay.
So, um, the, with the reductions, the mill rate would be, say, 28.52. So it's a .16 mill rate increase.
Point 16, we're at, um, we're at 28.36. If we go, yeah, to .52, that's .16. So the question becomes, are we happy with that mill rate and want to stick with it and keep with the $900,000 revenue source from the fund balance? Or let's suppose, Anna, that we only pulled, say, let's suppose for argument's sake, we pulled only $750,000 out of the fund balance. What would our mill rate look like?
Okay, so you want, say that again, I was, I was, I'm sorry, I was kind of working.
That's okay, so. The, the board is looking at a 28.52 mill rate. If we still pull $900,000 out of the fund balance into our revenue stream. What happens to that mill rate if we only pull $750,000 out of the fund balance to cover this operating budget?
Okay, so that would be 150. So. So it would be nine, oh, wait a minute.
So if I did that, so it would be more like a .23 mill increase.
So we're looking at 228.59. So those are the choices, people. We can, you know, adjust the revenue stream downward from the 900,000. But the mill rate goes up a little bit, or we can keep the 900,000 pulled from the general fund in order to, to, to get closer to a 28.52 mill rate.
Sorry, I'm just confused. So the mill rate was either at .16 or, or what was the other mill rate?
A .23 increase.
I, I, what?
.23.
Increase. So, so Ann Chakel, right? Right now, our mill rate is 28.36. We're either looking at a .16 increase to that or a .23, given the two scenarios that were, that were just laid out.
I definitely wholeheartedly go in favor of the .16 mill rate increase versus the .23.
I could support that as well, because since we're getting all these millions of dollars of ARP funds, I, I'm not worried about the fund balance. I think we're going to be able to use a lot of those funds in a very constructive manner in the future. Particularly since we didn't lean on any of those funds for this budget year. I'm not so concerned about that as I once was.
And I think the, the budget for next year, there's going to be, you know, items that are removed either from capital or from different things based upon, you know, the CARES Act. So that's why I really strongly feel that we should bring down the mill rate.
I, I agree.
I agree too.
Yeah, I'll go with it, it's.
So I'm hearing let's keep the $900,000 revenue stream from the fund balance for the next fiscal year. Okay, all right, I think we have, I think we have a consensus there. Do we need to make a motion on that, Anna, for the revenue side?
You know what, what you really should do is, um, I, I, well, I, I think what we should do is you should make a motion like that you're, you know, well, I guess we would do that next week after the public hearing. Like make a motion that states what the general government budget is, what debt service, what capital, and what Board of Ed is. So that, um, you know, it's, it's in the record for each component, um, component. So in terms of the revenues, you could just make a motion to have me adjust the projected revenues to, to agree with what you have as a proposed budget.
Well, we don't need to do that because we're not changing it from what was proposed, right? We're keeping, we're keeping the revenue side of it the same, we're not changing.
We're reducing what we need to collect in taxes. Because we made, we made, um, you know, reductions in the budget. We made $796,829 worth of reduction. So I need to reduce the ta, the current tax collection dollar amount so that the projected revenues will equal the, the proposed budget of $77,994,780.
So we need to make a motion to approve general government, debt service, capital, and Board of Education. I think we already did the Board of Education. But we, um, well, let's look at the numbers then. General government is going to decrease by 700 96,829.
Just one second.
Oh, that can be right. Which board member has the number for the, the Board of Ed reduction? Is that 593,916 dollars reduction?
Correct.
Yes, thanks, Rich.
So that would put the.
The total of 796,824? 829.
What was that number again, Rich?
796829.
796829, okay, that's exactly what I have, those, we made no, okay. So we can make a motion this evening for the budget in its entirety. Well, we made a motion for the Board of Ed, so we can let that ride. We made a boat, we made a motion for the town. So we can let that ride. And we can, we can add a third motion, which discusses what the total town budget will be, because we didn't change debt service or capital. With direction to the Finance Director to adjust the revenue accounts accordingly, is that what you want us to say?
Can I just, can I share my screen for a second?
Yes, please. And in the meantime, can you, can you confirm to me, Anna, that the amount of the entire budget that this board passed this evening? 77, yep, 77, 994,780. Exactly, that's what I have.
So this is what it, it looks like, um, you know, the first, the adopted budget for this year, which was 76,191,073. Um, the Board of Selectmen, um, you know, forwarded the budget to you at 78,791,609 and your reductions, um, the budget total, 77,994,780 for a 2.37% overall increase.
Okay, so what you're asking us to do is to make a motion approving the, the total town budget?
Yeah, as, as presented by category, general government, debt service, capital, and Board of Education.
And do you need us to say anything about the revenue side of things or no?
And then, and then the other piece would be that you, you direct me to reduce the amount of current taxes to be collected to reflect the total revenues to, to equal the expense side of the budget.
Okay. I should have written this motion out before this evening. Would anybody like to give this motion a stab?
I'm not sure I could.
All right, let me try it, I'll try it. I think, I think we still have Karen on the call, I don't think we lost her, she might be able to correct me if I get this wrong, okay. Uh, this is Camille Alberti, I make a motion to approve the town budget for. Uh, this is Camille Alberti, I make a motion to approve the town budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one slash twenty-twenty-two. In the amount of seventy-seven million nine hundred ninety-four thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars. As reflected in the distribution of general government. Nineteen million three hundred eighty-one thousand two hundred and ten dollars. Debt service, five million seven hundred twenty thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars. Capital, six hundred eighty-three thousand one hundred thirteen dollars. And Board of Education, fifty-two million two hundred nine thousand four hundred and sixty-four dollars. Furthermore, we... We request the Finance Director to adjust the amount of tax revenues to reflect the amount of the approved budget. Of seventy-seven million nine hundred ninety-four thousand seven hundred eighty dollars. How does that sound? Karen Z, are you still on the call? Or did we lose her? Does that sound okay?
She's on.
Okay. How did that sound, Anna? Did that sound fine to you?
It, it accomplishes what we were looking to accomplish.
Okay, do I have a second?
I second.
Okay, and maybe, maybe you can stop sharing the screen, Anna?
Yep. Oh.
Okay. There was a motion on the floor, there was a second, is there any additional conversation? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
We have the ayes as Richard Steele, John Birmingham, Peter DeRosa, and Anne Chakello. Is there a nay vote?
Um, I have a nay vote, nay.
That is Anne Santoro, so the motion carries five-one-zero. Okay, thank you. So we had three, a total of three motions tonight, all adding up to the same result, hopefully. Um... We will not be discussing the CIP plan tonight. We can adjourn that discussion for tomorrow evening's meeting. Although we've made a big accomplishment in, in a single night in passing this budget, I still would like to hold the meeting tomorrow night, because there are three special appropriation requests that, uh, the Board of Finance needs to deal with. And so I don't anticipate that being very long. Um, so let's still plan on meeting tomorrow.
What time is it tomorrow?
It is, uh, six-thirty, I believe. Yes. Okay, are there any board comments? Any comments that any board member would like to make for the record?
I do, I have one. Um, thanks, everyone, for, you know, working on the budget, and thank you, uh, Anna and Karen. Uh, I, I think we did a very nice job. I, I just wanted to make a notation that, um, I, I agree with everything we've done. My only sticking point, of course, was the two versus one with the police. And once I voted that way, just to be consistent in my voting, I voted not on the budget. But I, I wholeheartedly approve, uh, everything else that we've discussed, agreed upon, compromised on. So I, I, I just wanted to be consistent in my, uh, in, in my point, so, but, uh, thanks so much.
Yeah. I appreciate those comments, Anne, thank you. Anybody else? Final comments for this evening? Okay.
Yeah, I just wanna, um... I really wanted to see the two police officers happen as well. Um, I chose to go and get the budget passed, so we could continue moving forward, but I will continue to advocate for, I, I think the Police Department is, is, got a tough challenge ahead of them, and, and I wanna just express my support to them in any way possible. Um, I also wanna commend the Board of Education for proposing a very good, solid budget with, with a lot of thought, and, um, I'm hoping we'll be able to continue to support them, um, as we move forward too.
Okay, thanks, Peter. Anybody else?
I'm just gonna ditto what Peter said.
Okay. Thanks, John. There's no further com- comments, um, I want to obtain a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting.
So moved.
Thanks, John.
Second.
Thanks, Anne. All those in favor, please say aye.
All right.
Thanks, everyone, great job, we'll see you tomorrow night.